Give us a minute to get settled and then we'll start.
Maybe this is 20 font, I still can't read it. I gotta get more carrots. Really? Yeah.
Okay, again, thank you for your patience. We'll start tonight's meeting at 5:44. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the rule?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Mayor Kelly Krebs?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Robert Parkhurst is participating via teleconference. Are you here?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Edward Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Here.
And Councilmember Christine Lowe?
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goss, would you like to lead us in the pledge and inspiration?
I would. Please rise and face the flag if you're able.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Well, it says inspiration, so I came up with a couple of things that I thought were kind of inspiring, maybe at the minimum hopeful. Things that I've read recently in the news about some scientific discoveries. I hadn't been aware of this, but apparently there's been substantial reforestation taking place on the east coast and the southeast over the last hundred years. And there's been some recent scientific study of that. Journalist Andy Corbly writes that "A century of gradual reforestation across the American east and southeast has kept the region cooler than it otherwise would have been." This is according to a new study published in the journal Earth's Future. The study shows how the last 25 years of accelerated reforestation around the world might significantly pay off in the second half of the 21st century. Using a variety of calculative methods and estimations based on satellite and temperature data from weather stations, the authors determine that forests in the eastern United States cool the land surface by 1.8 to 3.6 degrees Fahrenheit annually compared to nearby grasslands and crop lands with the strongest effect seen in the summer when cooling amounts to 3.6 to 9 degrees Fahrenheit. The younger the forest, the more the cooling effect was detected. The reforestation, quote, this is a quote, "The reforestation has been remarkable, and we have shown that this has translated into the surrounding air temperature," according to Mallory Barnes, an environmental scientist at Indiana University who led the research. Quote, "Moving forward, we need to think about tree planting, not just as a way to absorb carbon dioxide, but also the cooling effects in adapting for climate change to help," wait for it, "cities be resilient against these very hot temperatures." So, let's talk about planting some more trees. And then another issue, another item I thought was really interesting and very hopeful, I saw it in the LA Times, and then I lost my LA Times hard copy, so I went looking for it on the internet. And the title of that article was "Could a Single Synthetic Molecule Outsmart a Variety of Drug-Resistant Bacteria or So-Called Superbugs?" I knew it was a big problem, I didn't realize it was this big of a problem. About 2.5, 2.8 million people each year contract infections, oftentimes in hospitals, from these bacteria resistant to antibiotics. Thirty-five thousand people die each year from these infections. Despite that mounting toll and the prospect or prediction of eventual surge in superbug fatalities, the development of new antibiotics has failed to keep pace with the threat. In fact, it's several decades behind, which is very troublesome. So, when a new substance appears on the scene with a decent chance of eventually becoming one of these desperately needed drugs, scientists say it's a big deal. So, researchers at Harvard and University of Illinois at Chicago have created a new molecule that effectively vanquished multiple types of bacteria when tested in animals. The organisms on its hit list included strains of, and I'm gonna butcher this pronunciation, Staphylococcus aureus and Escherichia coli. Sound really nasty. And other pathogens that have become resistant to most antibiotics currently available. The new molecule dubbed Creosomycin was described Thursday in the journal Science. Creosomycin is not yet a drug, nor is it close to being ready for clinical trials in humans, but it represents a promising enough step toward new treatments that a nonprofit dedicated to fighting superbugs gave its Harvard creator $1.2 million this week to develop Creosomycin and similar substances into new oral antibiotics. So, if you've ever known anybody who went to the hospital and got one of those infections, and I have, you know how scary it is. The ones people I know survive, but plenty of people don't, so this is very hopeful stuff. You know, science is amazing. Progress is happening all the time, we just don't hear much about it. We hear about all the nasty stuff. With that, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, that was inspiring. Next to approve the meeting agenda, and I actually do have one thing I'd like to actually pull from consent, so I'm happy to make the motion unless anybody else has anything that they want to do.
I'd like to make a motion to move Consent Item D, Consideration of the Sierra Madre Fourth of July Festivities and Parade Memorandum of Understanding, up in the Consent to A or B. Because we have a variety of members of the Fourth of July Committee, and that would be about looking at the other consent, it's gonna be long. So, read.
So, I'm sorry, well, I'm actually gonna move to move the Fourth of July contract off consent, so we can talk about where to order it.
Oh.
Okay.
In keeping with Councilmembers, Low, I think that makes sense. If you want to take it off the consent, maybe we can move somewhat near the top.
Before public hearings, perhaps?
Well, maybe before consent, actually. Can we do that?
There's an idea.
Let's make it, let's pull it off consent, but make it a discussion item before consent?
Yes, that's permissible.
So, it will slot in after public comment for items not on the agenda, and then we will do discussion of the Sierra Madre events contract, and then we'll do consent. I'd make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, thank you. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to report out from our closed session?
Yes, thank you Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss three items. First, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. Second, conference with labor negotiator, the unrepresented employee in this case with the city manager, and then conference with labor negotiator, the unrepresented employee in that case was a city attorney. And no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion for approval of reading resolutions and ordinance by title only.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving right along. Approval to the meeting minutes from February 13th. Madam City Clerk, did you receive any changes?
Madam Mayor, we, the city clerk's office received some comments from Mayor Pro Tem Parkhurst to make some non, some corrections that were typographical in nature, and so it does not change the action reported.
They were non-substantive, I think is the word that you were looking for.
It was, the word that escaped me, yes, that was the word, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to change? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right. We'll move on to Mayor and City Council reports. Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to go first?
Sure, I can take that, thank you. As with all members on the council, I was at the breakfast for Supervisor Barker, which was an incredible event. She brought along all kinds of people from the county to address the questions and concerns that we raised, and it was incredibly, incredibly helpful. Also that day, there was a Clean Power Alliance meeting, nothing to report out of that. On February 16th, I was fortunate enough, I got a request to be part of an interview with the KABC television station on Max Romero to talk about the work that he's done with the city, and that's going to be aired sometime in the future. And then the last thing I have to report is, oh, actually, I've got two things. One is February 20th with the Community Services Meeting, and they voted to remove the barbecue pits in Bailey Park. I think from a fire perspective and the age of those fire pits, it makes a lot of sense to pull those out. And then they also discussed the Wisteria Festival permit, so we're all going forward with that, and as well as a couple of other events coming up, and give a report on the Transportation Committee. And then finally, in preparation for our meeting tonight, I watched the February 1st Planning Commission meeting to see the discussion around the tenant truck map, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goss?
Okay, on the 14th, I was unable to join the Transportation Subcommittee. Later in tonight's agenda, we will be reviewing the Subcommittee's work, so I look forward to that discussion. On the morning of February 15th, I joined Mayor Pro Tem and all of my council colleagues at that county meeting with County Supervisor Barker, and I have to say that the breakfast was tasty. But the big news is that we've moved ahead on several issues with the county, and the supervisor was there and had, as Mayor Pro Tem said, had directors of whole departments there, which is kind of, kind of a big deal, giving us, you know, direct information about what they were doing with issues that we are concerned with. So, I was very impressed with that, and very thankful to the supervisor for doing that. Later that day, I attended the COG meeting in Monrovia. I think it was one of the shortest meetings they've ever had. Half the members were actually remote and had nothing to say, so there's really nothing significant to report. And then last night, I attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting, which is also a relatively short meeting, and I really don't have anything particularly urgent to report about that either. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Low?
I didn't have much this last couple of weeks, just the meeting with Supervisor of LA County Barker. I thought that one thing I really wish the public, you know, with parts of it were aired, just because it was such a collaboration of LA Metro with the County of Los Angeles, different positions and executives, and as well as our city staff. I mean, I literally think that our city staff and our personnel are so superb. It's like we're getting, we're getting such a superb staff, and we get so much done for such a small town. And it was such a collaborative meeting to be able to work with all these entities that, it's like we have a request, we have an action, it gets put into action, and we have a result within a really short amount of time, which is such a relief and such an enlightening experience. So, I want to commend our staff and commend all the collaboration that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth. No, don't be sorry. Maybe I'll just echo a little bit. Just to have our staff, our city manager and management analyst Carlson, giving amazing staff reports, not just to the council, but to directors in the county level, so informed, so well-informed, and the discussion was well, you know, was well-placed around issues regarding our city, and our representative hears us, which is, which is a good thing. So, that was an amazing time. Don't have much more to add to that. And last Saturday, the 24th, I attended the Little League opening day parade and ceremony. I was second parade in a row, got to drive myself, I drove, I drove my car, but I was honored to drive the grand marshal of the parade, the Bent family, for that parade. So, it was a great, great day, as typically is. We had a flyover by the Coast Guard. They did a flyover right over the field, it was pretty exciting. The president of Little League, I think he spoke for about an hour and 25 minutes, and he kept, he kept Little Leaguers' attention the whole time. That's the first time I've ever seen a president of Little League engage those, the little ones so long and so well. But it was a great event, and I think the mayor probably has a few words about that as well. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I've actually been quite busy since our last meeting. I also attended the breakfast that everyone has mentioned, and I will just say that people are talking about the county supervisor bringing are talking about the county supervisor bringing a lot of staff, I want to be clear, she brought the head of LA County Public Works to our meeting. And I'm so thankful for her support and her staff's participation, although I will be slightly cynical and say I do wish it was an election year every year. But, that being said, she has been great regardless of the year, but this was a particularly productive meeting, and she brought in the big, the big guns, which was great. After that meeting, I think later that same night, actually, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, got a preview of what we're going to hear tonight about the housing element update. The Natural Resources Committee Commission meeting was canceled this month. Last week, I attended the LA County City Selection Committee meeting, where we were there to select our representative to the AQMD Board. Many of you may remember the council member from South Pass, Michael, and I'm going to butcher his last name, Coachiotti, yeah. Oh, and here, wow, the timing. We were, we were happy to reappoint council member to the AQMD Board in an eight-minute-long meeting, it was the shortest meeting I've ever been to. And, let's see, what else? And then this past weekend was quite the weekend, as council member Garcia mentioned, I also attended Opening Day, which is, you know, always one of the best days of the year in Sierra Madre, and it was really just great to see all the kids and the new family and the new scoreboard that the grand marshal Bent family sponsored, and their participation in both, both the Little League and softball is really commendable. Also attended the softball opening day, the very next day, we're having them back-to-back now, which is great. And that was also really exciting, just to see all the little girls, and wow, do little girls just scream, they're screaming, wow. But just the enthusiasm was palpable. Thanks to our city, Madam City Clerk, for also attending both of those events, really got, it was really, got a lot of kudos from both leagues for the city representation, and she took great pictures, as you probably saw on social media. And then, in the middle of all of that, we coordinated with the Community Services Commission and opened and cut the ribbon on the new equipment, fitness equipment, rather, at Sierra Vista Park, just south of the basketball court. So lots of fitness and family fun and youth sports going on at Sierra Vista Park this weekend. And that concludes my report. I do have some city announcements, so the Wisteria Festival is closely at hand. It is scheduled for March seventeenth, so make sure you have that on your calendar, and obviously we'll have our normal open shops, food and craft vendors, we'll also have a return of the Sierra Madre Auto Show, so look for that, there's flyers in the back with more information. The Planning Commission has an expected vacancy coming up this July, so if you or anyone you know is interested in filling that vacancy, please contact Madam City Clerk for more information to apply, we definitely need to fill that vacancy. On Saturday, March sixteenth, just before the Wisteria Festival, Athens will be hosting a free hazardous waste and e-waste drop-off in the City Hall parking lot from eight until noon, also flyers in the back. On March twenty-third, at Memorial Park, we will be honoring Vietnam War vets, I believe it's the anniversary, although I hate to say that about a war, but the anniversary of the Vietnam War. So March twenty-third at eleven AM, we will have a ceremony at Memorial Park to honor the Vietnam War vets. And then, at the end of March, Athens will be hosting their, one of their compost events at Sierra Vista, on the west end of the parking lot, from eight AM to twelve PM. All members of the Little Leagues and softball and swimming should note that, because that means there'll be less parking that Saturday at Sierra Vista, from eight to twelve in that parking lot, also flyers in the back. So that are all, those are all of our announcements, and now I will welcome folks coming up for public comment for items not on the agenda, and just to remember that you have three minutes, and we welcome and invite all of your participation. However, if you are disruptive, we will provide a warning, I will provide a warning, and if you continue to be disruptive, we may ask you to leave. Please do not bring any posters or other large objects that will disrupt, disturb, or impede the meeting. Otherwise, I will open it up for any public comment, not for items not on the agenda. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first speaker card is from Patrick Holland.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, and Staff. My name is Pat Holland, I live at 101 Colony Drive, and I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Senior Community Commission, and I'm here tonight to just give you a little information on the upcoming Old American of the Year Award. We're seeking nominations for that award for 2024. We started this around in the nineteen eighties, and Sierra Madre has now had thirty-two such honorees. The nominee contributes to bettering the community and doing outstanding community service. The nominee can be an individual, a group, a couple, or an organization, but not someone who has received the award before, or any current member of the Senior Community Commission. The nominee must be at least thirty, I mean thirty.
Thirty is the new sixty, right?
Yes, it is, yes. The nominee must be at least sixty years young by May of this year, and a resident of Sierra Madre. And since January, we have made presentations and/or provided information to the Kiwanis, Rotary, Civic Club, Garden Club, Historical Preservation, Library Board of Trustees, Women's Club, Sierra Madre Community Foundation, Pioneer Cemetery Foundation, the Mount Wilson Trail Race Committee, all social media networks, the Senior Moments Newsletter, The Village View, and The Mountain View's News. I think it's been spread around, I hope we get a lot of nominations.
And we've mentioned it once or twice from up here, so.
And the nominations must be submitted by March thirteenth, this is only two weeks away. And they can be submitted to the Senior Center at Hart Park House, City Hall, or either by mail or in person. The Senior Community Commission will select the honoree at the April Senior Community Commission Monthly Meeting, held at three PM in Council Chambers. The honoree will be recognized at a reception that we'll put on on May eighteenth, and you're all invited, and you will get an invitation, and it'll be at the Hart Park House Senior Center, it usually is. The honoree will also be recognized by the Board of Supervisors at a function, the date and place to be determined later on. And they will get to participate in the Fourth of July Parade. I have left some nomination forms in the back on the table, so if anyone wants to nominate anyone who lives in the city and is at least sixty years old, not thirty, we're more than welcome to receive those nominations. And as a side note, we will have two vacancies in the Senior Community Commission this coming June thirtieth, so if anybody's interested, please let the staff know. So thank you.
I also announced that at Little League Opening Day, so there was about two hundred people there, so let's hope.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker card is from Joel Goodwin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and wonderful members of our City Council. I just have a couple, a couple of congratulations to our wonderful librarians. So far, I think it's a job well done on our new library, so far, they've been so successful, it's absolutely incredible. And I also want to commend this city for Sierra Vista Park. I think the changes to the parks have been absolutely phenomenal, planning, but we looked in equipment, and I had heard a lot of speculation that, 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 there's a possibility that they were going to take out the basketball courts, I'm so happy, but they retained, no, I had heard speculation, so I'm glad that they're staying, because I heard that they were going to come out at some point, and I was just like, no, don't. So thank you very much, and I just want to commend our library, you guys have been so great, and this city is so great, Sierra Madre is a great town to be in, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, our next speaker card is from Chief Bartlett. Only if it's as effusive and congratulatory as that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to, didn't have the opportunity to agendize this, being as it came to us rather quickly, but just wanted to give a quick update on our refound partnership with the California Conservation Corps. They reached out to us at the end of April to let us know that they had a fully funded crew to perform fuel reduction projects as a result of AB twenty-one twenty-six, which basically requires the establishment of a forestry corps program and crews. The bill, excuse me, the bill required that the establishment of four forestry corps crews, two of them to be based in either the state SRA, which did not apply to us, but also the very high fire hazard severity zone, which we know, know that well in our area. Currently, we're partnered with a crew from Pomona, and they are, they're basically tasked with the development and implementation of forest health projects, which include in these, included in these projects, excuse me, are fuel reductions and hazardous fuel removal. I met with them on February seventh, and this is just kind of just to see how quickly this, this came to be, to discuss the scope of the project, and a week and a half later, they showed up and they were ready to work. We just finished work yesterday at the top of Sunrise Hill, and took out quite a bit of evasive vegetation from that area. Today, they started work up on Mount Wilson Trail, and they're going to be doing pretty much the same. We have anticipated that they will be there for about two weeks, maybe a little bit longer, and then we also have some work planned in the Bailey Canyon area as well, and if time permits, we're looking at portions of Santa Anita around the Land and Debris Basin. So we're trying to get as much ground covered, or uncovered, if you will, as possible. We currently foresee the assistance through the, through the month of April, and just some projected value is estimated probably about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of in-kind contribution from the Conservation Corps. Again, just wanted to bring you up to speed on that, as I get more information from them, I will try to get that agendized if possible, just as a presentation. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, at this time, we don't have any other speaker cards, and we don't, we did not receive any emails on items not on the agenda. One more speaker card.
First of all, thank you so much for having me here, my name is Samir Reed, I'm here on behalf of the Pasadena City College Outreach Team, I'm the STEM guy on the team. But today, I'm in my capacity for our PUSD Science Fest, which is going to be coming to John Muir's Northwest Campus on March sixteenth, from twelve to five. This is a partnership between Pasadena Unified, John Muir High School, Early College Magnet, and the PUSD Science Fest 2024 Committee that we have. This is led by our committee chairman, Warren Skidmore. PUSD Science Fest is now in its fourth year, this is a free community event for families and students of all ages from schools across the PUSD region and beyond. To this point, we have about a hundred confirmed groups representing the environment, JPL Space Missions, blacksmithing, emergency services, medicine and public health, robotics, law enforcement, utility providers, aerospace industries, Caltech Sciences is going to be there, we have Armed Forces representation, now folks from TV and film, sports, and more. Many of the exhibitors are student clubs and groups from PUSD schools and colleges and universities in the area. In addition to inspiring students towards STEM careers, the PUSD Science Fest strives to show the educational and career pathways that students can utilize, including internships and support for post-secondary education. This committee consists of parents, staff, and students from across the district. These folks are all doing a great job working with communications, invitations, advertising, and planning. It's been a great effort, you know, if y'all have not already received the information, I'd be happy to afford this along to everyone in Sierra Madre to make sure that we can get folks there. I also have flyers for that and some initiatives, some other initiatives we have going on at PCC this much, including our Girl Science Day, which is going to be happening on the twenty-third of March, as well as our STEAM museum on campus as well, and we're also going to be having a Middle School Math Academy upcoming for students this summer as well to get, get credit or non-credit, just to catch up or accelerate their math skills as well. Thank you again for your time, and I can, would it be okay if I left some of these flyers in the back?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Okay. It does not appear we have any more speaker cards. Great, thank you. So I think we will proceed, we didn't talk about the presentation in our reordering, but I think we'll go and have the presentation by Public Works Director, and then we will move on to our re-agendized item. And our city librarian, sorry.
City Librarian Leda will be going first.
Great, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Krebs, and our City Council members. I just wanted to let you know that I did get the final state approval, and our wonderful city manager signed off on it for the amendment to make sure that we have the funding for the project manager, management firm Vertex Engineering. So I have been able to secure an additional three hundred and fifty, no, sorry, four, yeah, three, four hundred and fifty thousand by adjusting some of the budget. It does mean that I took three hundred thousand from our moving and relocation costs, because I did put a very large buffer there, and about a hundred and fifty will be taken out of construction, but we also put a buffer there. So there won't be any large impacts to our construction costs, but we are able to have a full five hundred and fifty thousand dedicated to Vertex Engineering through the ten million dollar targeted state grant, so yay. That was the second, the second big amendment, the first one being the extension. And other than that, the library itself is going to be fully moved out of the four-four-zero West Sierra Madre Boulevard building by the end of this week, so we are getting the last of our things over, we're going to have a walkthrough as well with our Director of Public Works regarding what can be salvaged and things of that nature, so it'll, I'm kind of excited to see that, it'll be nice to see some movement in that. And the temporary library did get new shelving, so we already look different yet again, but, but we are, we're coming along, we are seeing an uptick in attendance to our programming and more people coming through the doors. One Book One City had some really great programs and some amazing turnouts, even for programming that was off-site, so that's my update, unless you have any questions for me.
I heard you were at capacity for the event on Saturday.
Yes.
Do you want to give just a quick update about that event, it sounded amazing?
Yes, the human library, we had dinner, it was catered by Corfu, which was really wonderful, and we were at capacity for that. We did have two books that didn't show, but we had eight human books that showed up. It was a really interesting program, and I've gotten a lot of comments regarding people who attended, that they got a lot out of that program, and they learned a lot about different types of people. We had, I know there was, there was a bipolar book, a transgender book, a, I think there was an Iranian book, there was a caregiver book, there was an autism book, so it was really interesting to kind of hear these stories, and it was a lot more interactive than I thought it would be, so you were encouraged to ask questions. So I got to kind of be the fly on the wall for that, but it was very well attended, and I'm hoping we can do it again.
And just to clarify, for those in the audience who didn't know the format, when she says book, it's a human, it's a human person who acts as a resource for then the public to interact with that book in this, in this setting, so that's really amazing. Thank you for putting that together.
Yes, and we have one final One Book One City event tomorrow night here in the City Council Chambers, and it'll be at six PM, and it's hosted by Rich Proctor. So if there are any other questions, I'll hand it off to our Director of Public Works.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any questions for our librarian?
No, I don't, I'm just kudos for a great event and for doing a great job with the budget.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Since my last report, Public Works has completed both Phase One and Phase Two of the plan review for the new building. Phase One consisted of foundation elements, soil composition, structural strength, et cetera. Phase Two consists of structural, which is the components due to the strength analysis, materials analysis, et cetera. The next phase is Phase Three, which consists of electrical, along with some HVAC systems that will be put in place, amps going in and out of the building with the new devices that will be installed. Vertex Engineering has been sent and is currently reviewing the city's professional contract agreement for their official onboarding. I do expect a response sometime this week. Once the agreement is finalized, we will begin immediate pre-scheduling for both logistics and demolition. This will include Vertex, TSK, and the Department of Public Works. This concludes my report at this time, I will address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Potem, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to our change in schedule. We had pulled off consent, the consideration, hold on, let me get the actual consideration of the Sierra Madre Fourth of July festivities and parade memorandum of understanding. And I know that because it was on consent, there's no staff report, but I don't know if someone wants to just give a little bit of background. Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, we do have a staff report in the packet.
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, we didn't anticipate a presentation.
City Attorney Gergosian will be presenting.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, as the city manager noted, that there is a staff report in the agenda packet, and I'll just go over some of the main points in the staff report. First, as you all know, the Sierra Madre Fourth of July festivities and parade takes place annually, and it's put on by the city, but with the help of a lot of volunteers. Formerly, there was a three-party special project agreement for the Fourth of July whereby the Sierra Madre Community Foundation held the funds that were raised by the Sierra Madre Fourth of July Committee. And the Fourth of July Committee also provided the volunteers necessary to work with the city in putting on the parade. The parties have agreed to dissolve that agreement, and as a condition of, or in order to trigger the dissolution, the the Sierra Madre Community Foundation provided the city of Sierra Madre with two checks, the entire balance of all funds held by the Sierra Madre Community Foundation for the Fourth of July Parade. So the city has those funds. The Fourth of July Committee requested those funds, and as a as a precondition, we required city administration required that the Sierra Madre Fourth of July Committee be incorporated as a nonprofit. So they've taken that step. They are now called the Sierra Madre Events Committee, which is a registered nonprofit with the California Secretary of State. And this memorandum formalizes both that agreement to transfer the funds over, as well as the respective parties' roles when it comes to planning the Fourth of July festivities and parade.
Thank you. Any questions?
So, City Attorney Gergosian, so the Fourth of July Committee did the fundraising, but the but the Sierra Madre Community Foundation held the money, correct?
Correct. And because the Fourth of July Committee wasn't unassociated organization, it wasn't incorporated with the Secretary of State as a nonprofit.
Any other questions?
So so I'm seeing within within the name change that there's might be contemplation beyond the Fourth of July. And I don't see a lot of language regarding what how that is going to happen. So maybe that could be part of our discussion. But was that contemplated? Should there be language there?
It was contemplated, but I'll say that there was no direction provided to expand the scope of their activities at this time. So if if city administration and the Fourth of July and the Sierra Madre Events Committee want to include new activities within the scope of the MOU, then we'd probably bring an amendment to the MOU before the council for consideration. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Potem, do you have any questions on this matter?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then I will open it up for public comment on this matter.
And I, Mayor, I don't have any speaker cards on this topic, nor did we receive any emails from the public.
I noticed that we have a number of the members of the committee. I assumed that perhaps they were going to comment during public comment. Now would be the time.
Hello, morning, mayor, council, staff members. So we actually had a meeting last night. As you can see, I'm wearing one of their shirts from, I'm not sure what year this is. We actually approved a new shirt for this year, which I'm sure you all like. It was designed by a Sierra Madre resident. We are in process of trying to get everything going for the Fourth of July. That being said, this MOU is, or our money being held by the city is contingent on approval of this MOU. So we do have expenses. We do have things that we are planning for, including the Wisteria Festival. We're planning to have the new T-shirts available by that time. Also, Mount Wilson Trail Race, we're hoping to have a presence there. If there's any questions that you have as far as regarding anything else that we can move forward with this MOU, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions. But we are looking forward to you voting and approving this MOU today. We do have ongoing expenses. We have storage containers that we rent we rent out for equipment that we have. And we have a bunch of volunteers that are looking forward to getting this going, getting this rolling, because it does take a lot of time. We do meet mostly year-round throughout the year to get this to get this event going. So if there's anything I can help in moving this forward, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have decision makers present?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question. Does anybody else have any questions? For the for the committee, along, you know, sort of in similar vein that you asked questions of Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our wonderful volunteers that comprise this committee, that we're contemplating reimbursement in the interim, because we're kind of in this gray area now. I want to make sure either you're not spending any of your own funds, or there's a vehicle here that will make sure that you guys are reimbursed for anything that's happening.
We are spending our own funds.
Okay.
We do have credit cards that have outstanding balances and things for such as getting the incorporating the fees along with that, attorney's fees to go along with that. So, yes.
Mr. City Attorney, will they be able to, upon approval, will they be able to get reimbursements for that interim period?
So it depends on what the funds are going to be used for. If the fund, the funds have to be limited for the for organizing the Fourth of July festivities and parade. So the funds shouldn't be used for incorporation of the nonprofit. The funds shouldn't be used for any other expenses that were incurred. They should be used for the parade itself. And then the the organization can also fundraise itself and use other funds that they've raised in the future to pay off some of those other expenses that the gentleman talked about. Okay.
Yeah, as outlined in the in the MOU, there is an amount of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirteen cents that was for the Fourth of July funds. There's an amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-four cents that was for the that's being held for the Little League. Sorry? Proceeds of the Beer Garden, which goes to the Little League and softball, girl softball. So but that the seventy, seventy-one, seventy-one thousand, two oh six is what we would be using for the Fourth of July, you know, ongoing festivities and whatnot.
So what I'm hearing is you guys, as soon as you're formed, you need to have a fundraiser immediately.
We were folding letters last night for sponsors, yes.
To then pay for the incorporation and all those things, because
Going forward, yes.
You guys put a lot of time and effort into it, and I would hate to see your treasure be put into it if if we can spread the cost amongst the the fine residents of the city.
Yes.
Or other sponsors.
Or other sponsors, yeah.
So those are sponsor letters that went out last night.
I just want to make sure everything's transparent and clear.
Right, right.
We have fundraising letters going out to the residents.
That have a that have a broader scope, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah, great. Any other questions? Mayor Potem, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you. All right, so we'll bring it back for discussion. I guess I will start, just because I pulled it off of consent. My only, and then and I obviously front-loaded my question about decision makers being present. My only concern, and it's not even really a concern, I think it's just a technicality, I do appreciate that there's a provision in here that that requires a detailed accounting from the committee to the city of all income, but it's specifically related to income and expenditures related to the fourth event, which makes sense, because that's obviously what this MOU is covering. However, I think because the city has the money, has money now currently, and is going to, you know, transfer it to the committee upon signing of this agreement, I do think we might want an audit right that we could exercise at our discretion, just to make sure that other expenditures outside of the fourth event weren't weren't funded by this money. And I think my my sense is that we would only actually exercise that right if there was some, you know, third-party request, either, you know, citizen, some sort of tax or other legal obligation. But I just think we would like the right to be able to request that audit. I don't think we need to have it as a ongoing reporting requirement, but I think to protect the city, and I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if you have thoughts about that, about maybe that that's over overreaching or unnecessary, but I did, that's the one thing I thought was missing.
I don't have any concern about that, Mayor. I'm happy to incorporate that into the agreement. I I did want to note something that the public commenter said. The public commenter noted that the funds that came in came in in two separate tranches, which is correct, seventy-one thousand and nineteen thousand, seven hundred. But the way this MOU is written, both of those funds can only be expended on the parade. Now, if if the Sierra Madre Events Committee is contemplating using one tranche for the parade and the other tranche for something else, that should also be clarified in this MOU.
Please approach.
And also, we should consider ongoing fundraising and events, how those monies can be dispersed vis a vis the Beer Garden, I think.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me try to clarify this as the primary person who's done most of the work and been involved for the last twenty years on both organizations and sitting where you guys are. So and been meeting with the city attorney on the topic. So the 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 matter is, we actually are a five oh one C three with the state of California and the IRS. So we are actually also beholden to every rule of the IRS, the same as the community foundation was prior to our arrangement with them. So if we don't spend the money the way that we are supposed to, we are beholden to a higher organization and could lose our five oh one C three status. No, no, I just want to make
No, I know, I just I just want to clarify. I'm not asking for this because I'm
No, no, I know.
wanting accountability. I just want the ability, if we get asked something, that we are able to ask you for information.
Hundred percent, and we have to be above board about that anyways.
Right.
Which is why we agreed that every year, just like we have done before we were our own five oh one C three, at the end of every Fourth of July event, we produce a report to the Community Services Commission that explains all of the revenue that we've taken in and all of the expenditures we've had out. All of that revenue includes the five K, the Beer Garden, and every other part of the Fourth of July celebration. We made a point to change the word from parade to celebration, because it encompasses more than just the morning of the parade. It includes usually several days on either side of that, depending on when the Fourth of July falls. If the Fourth of July falls, like on a three or four-day weekend, sometimes we're doing movies in the park. Over the years, we've done carousels and music and other activities, the concerts, all of that. That is encompassed in everything that we've done. We are aware, and we are holding firm, we've agreed to the community foundation and to the city, that the funds that we're being given will only be used for Fourth of July festivities and celebrations, and we will account for that separately. The letter that's going out this year, that is the one that we were folding last night, and we, everybody will start to see in the mail, speaks directly to our leaving the Fourth of July name and becoming the Sierra Madre Events Committee and doing other things in the community. The same group of volunteers that have been putting on the Fourth of July festivities for everybody have also been for the last ten years, the volunteers that have helped decorate Christine Court and downtown for the winter holiday festivities. So that is one of the things that we have also done as volunteers through other means and, you know, Rotary does the light poles, and we've done certain things. And from this point forward, we would raise money that could be spent on those things as well. We opted not to formalize that agreement, because there are other parties involved that do things like Rotary does, the light poles, and the other groups that take part in that process. We didn't want to overstep on anybody else's toes and let Jose figure out what he wanted to do in regards to those things. But we were open to those and other event discussions that the city may have in the future, where you're looking for help and assistance. And that's when we came up with the idea of it could be an amendment to the existing contract. But the bulk of what we're focused on now is making sure we can get the twenty twenty-four Fourth of July event off and running, using the money that's already been raised. But it's really important to us that the community understands that that sounds like a lot of money, and we realize that. But to put on the Fourth of July event just the way that everybody sees it every year, costs about sixty-five thousand dollars. So even with that money, if we raise not a single dollar from that letter that ran out, we would be done with the Fourth of July after this year. So we have to continually raise money to replenish those funds to pay the events going forward. So even with the money that we're being given, we'll be able to pay for this year's event.
Well, and to be clear, you're not being given the money. It's your money.
Thank you for that.
In a, you know, in a different form.
And we have to be careful with that Beer Garden money, because the proceeds of that money were always raised during our event with our volunteers and the youth sports volunteers in that Beer Garden. And it's advertised publicly everywhere that those proceeds goes back to those two organizations for the kids in the community. Because we dissolved that agreement, they didn't get the chance to go to the foundation and ask for that money. It was the foundation's choice to clear both accounts and give it that way. So I want to make sure it's very clear. We know that money belongs to our youth sports programs, and we have every intent to give it back to them the way that we continue that partnership moving forward. We expect that there will be a Beer Garden in July, and the proceeds from this year's Beer Garden will go back to youth sports, just as it always has.
Okay, so to Ed's point, it sounds like there needs to be one adjustment, at least one adjustment to the contract to 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 refer to that nineteen thousand dollar number as not being used for purposes of putting on this year's
That's the, yeah, it is the proceeds from the Beer Garden and should go back to our youth sports.
So it is encumbered, currently, the way it's written, it's encumbered to be only for Fourth of July use.
Well, as the public commenter said, it's Fourth of July Parade and Celebration, which contemplates events on the third and the fourth.
But they cannot then, they can't use that nineteen, the current writing, they cannot use that nineteen thousand to give to youth sports, right, as it is.
Correct.
So I think we'll need to make that change.
And we would be amenable to that, because that is the the proceeds from that, we take our cut, which we've already taken, and that's sitting in the eighty thousand, that is their cut from three years' worth of Beer Gardens.
Okay. So that's one thing. And then I think my, then my, just have my comment about our ability to request an audit, a request a right to audit if, you know, if needed. And I, and we can put whatever parameters. I mean, I usually see, like, you know, we can only do that once annually, or if, you know, if in response to some legal obligation that we have. So I'm happy to be reasonable.
Because I know that that might become difficult as we start. I mean, I know that we have to separate that money and make sure that it's only being used for this year's expenses, because that's our intent. But like, once it's drawn down this year and moving forward, I don't know that the audit, the audit will become a little bit more co-mingled, because we're going to purposely raise funds to be able to use it for other
Yeah, and I think that would be fine. I think we just need to be able to trace it if someone comes two years from now and says, hey, I think they use this money.
We want to make sure that that's clear.
So I, I'm sorry, just mean, because then I don't think we need to talk about this audit right anymore, because it's become more of a big deal than I intended it to. So that, does that make sense? Do you have enough direction to put something in there to the effect of having a right to request an audit?
Yes, yes, I do.
And we're, we've all agreed that that's okay.
Okay, so the question I have, does anybody else have other changes?
Just a question. So I want to make sure I understand. It's approximately ninety thousand, which is the two tranches. That's where the encumbrances lie. If they raise funds from the the date of signing of this MOU forward, are are those funds, I know they have to be used within the spirit of the MOU, but are they encumbered as well?
They they aren't encumbered, and they don't have to be used for this in the spirit of the MOU. They can be used for whatever purpose the funds are raised for.
Okay, okay, good. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
I think that's clear in the agreement. The agreement does talks about this, these funds.
Want to make sure.
Mr. Mayor Potem, did you have any questions?
No, I appreciate all the discussion and all the back and forth on this. So thank you for for bringing it up, and thank you for pulling it off of consent. I think it's been very helpful.
I'm ready unless other people have things to say. I'm ready to make or entertain a motion to approve with the two amendments that we've discussed.
I'll move.
I second that.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I think as long as we're in agreement that these, those amendments are fine, then I think we can consider this executed or, you know, final to ready to be executed tonight and approved. You're welcome. Thank you. We should have said that from the beginning. We should say that it's no underestimation to say that these folks literally put on, I mean, obviously, we have city staff that puts a lot of work into it as well. But without this committee, the Fourth of July festivities, as you know them, would not happen. So we owe, we should just give them a round of applause.
We should.
And thank you to our city manager and city attorney for putting this all together and getting all this sorted out. I think this will be a great, you know, additional committee, committee with additional resources and and a charge to help with other events. and a charge to help with other events. This, I think, will be a great development for our city. Okay, so now on to the regular consent. Madam C Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are three items for consideration this evening for City Council. The first of three is a consideration of Resolution 24-13 approving certain demands. Resolution 24-13 is seeking approval from the City Council to approve payments of certain demands. Consent item B is the City Treasurer's report for the quarter ending December thirty-one, 2023. It is recommended that the City Council receive and file this report. And lastly, consent item C is consideration of Resolution 24-15. The title reads that it is amending the Classification Plan and Salary Matrix for Classified Employees Association and Confidential Exempt Group. It is the recommendation from staff that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 24-15. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions about any of the items? Warrants? Treasurer report? Salary Matrix Amendment? Hearing none, I will move to public comment for items on the consent, remaining on the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards, nor did we receive any emails.
Okay, so I'll bring it back, either for discussion or a motion?
Just a quick comment on the Treasurer's report, as I typically do. I just want to applaud our Director of Finance, Hillary Gorilla Leon, as well as our, the whole staff of Finance and our City Treasurer for doing another, another fine job with our excess cash. I mean, we earned, this small city earned one point five million dollars in interest. I know you guys aren't the Federal Reserve Bank, you're not the ones raising the interest rate to help us get those huge returns, but you were very forward-thinking in making sure that we're not just in the LEF funds, even though LEF has gone up considerably as well. I just want to, I just want to keep commending staff and our City Treasurer for doing such a fine job with all that. So, I want to stand up and clap, but I won't. You're here.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our public hearings. The first is the consideration of Tentative Track Map 22-01. I believe that's Planning Manager Lynn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councils. Before we start the review of the application, I would like to turn it over to our city attorney to go over the background and the project timeline.
So, staff provided this background mostly to the Planning Commission because a lot of Planning Commissioners were new and they probably didn't have this background. Council may know this, but we thought it might be useful for members of the public to also have this background as well. This is an ongoing project. It started, the events began on April twentieth, 2022, with the City Council approving an MOU. Later, the Planning Commission approved all the entitlements as part of Phase One of the project. The City Council later approved those entitlements. There was an initiative election, there was a referendum election, and the results of the referendum election were certified on May twenty-three, 2023. May twenty-third is the date that the Development Agreement and all the other entitlements that were approved as part of Phase One took effect, triggering deadlines. Next slide. In the Development Agreement, certain applications need to be submitted by dates, payments need to be made by specific dates, there's a timeline. And so, the first step as part of Phase Two of this project is what's before you today? The Tentative Track Map, Trap, the Tentative Tracked Map Review by the Planning Commission and City Council. The Planning Commission will still see the design review permit, that's coming. The congregation needs to submit their own Tentative Track Map for review by the Planning Commission and City Council. There's going to be a number of other deadlines in order for this project to proceed. So, this is by no means over as of today. Next slide.
Just a quick question. When you say deadlines, are these deadlines for, by which the developer needs to abide? Or are these timelines by which the city needs to respond? Or there's probably both?
There are both. But with respect to the first three that were up on the screen, those are deadlines to submit complete applications in order for the city to process those entitlements. So, the first set of entitlements that were part of Phase One were the General Plan Map Amendment, Zoning Map Amendment, Specific Planet that was approved, the Development Agreement, and the Final EIR that was certified. These are all done. No further action is going to be taken on these five elements of the project. Next slide. What's coming before the city, what is before the city today is the Tentative Tracked Map to subdivide the lots. But what has also come to the city for consideration is the Design Review Permit, a parcel map that needs to be submitted again by the congregation, and the Carter Avenue Road Widening, which won't necessarily come before the city, but it's being processed through the county currently. And feel free to ask the applicant for an update on that. Next slide. Would you want me to take this one? Okay, so the-
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
So, I want to go back to the slide or so, on Slide Five. There was some questioning, some discussion about the hearings, the number of hearings. And I think there was some confusion on kind of how many hearings for these different items. Is that something that, can you expound a little bit on that? Because there's some thought of that there could be fifteen, or fifteen meetings for, it's five meetings for each of the items on the list there on Slide Five.
Certainly, Mayor Potem, if we can go back to the previous slide. So, the previous slide, these Phase One entitlements were not subject to any hearing limitation because they were legislative in nature. So, city staff intentionally divided this project into two phases, a legislative component and a quasi-judicial component. So, we can proceed forward to the next slide. Thank you. This is, these are the quasi-adjudicatory approvals. And in conversations, we've had conversations with the applicant and we've conveyed that it's the city's position that if the applications were to have been submitted altogether, meaning the Tentative Track Map and Design Review Permit were collectively submitted for consideration by the Planning Commission, then all of those quasi-adjudicatory approvals would have been subject to five hearings. However, the applicant has chosen to submit those individually. And because those have been submitted individually, each one of them is going to be subject to five hearings. And so, that's how we're proceeding. Potentially, to answer your question, Mayor Potem, potentially, the Tentative Track Map can have its own five hearings, Design Review Permit can have its own five hearings, and the parcel map can have its own five hearings, potentially.
Do you expand on that? So, going back to Slide Three on the bottom of the arrow, there's the Congregation TTM Review. So, that Tentative Track Map, is that the parcel map subdivision of lots?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, please proceed.
Next slide. At the, at the last meeting, sorry, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, the first Planning Commission hearing on this item, there were some concerns by members of the public regarding whether or not CAL FIRE had an opportunity to review this Tentative Track Map. The city staff hadn't submitted it to CAL FIRE and there was some questions on whether or not the relevant regulation was in effect. Our fire marshal reached out to CAL FIRE to get confirmation. That correspondence is an attachment to the staff report, I believe. So, members of the public and the City Council have a copy of that correspondence. The Tentative Track Map has since been submitted and we've received input from the Department of, from CAL FIRE that they don't have any comment on the Tentative Track Map or the process we have before us today. We'd also like to note that this isn't the first time CAL FIRE has seen this project. CAL FIRE is aware of the Meadows Project when it was submitted to them as part of the safety element update for the housing element, as well as when it was submitted to the state as part of the EIR process.
And they also, not only did they have no comment, but they also, didn't they also state that we were in compliance with that ordinance? With that law?
If, I don't recall off the top of my head if that's what the email said.
I believe that's what I saw in the email.
Unfortunately, I don't have the email in front of me. But I know that they didn't, they didn't have any specific comment.
Commissioner Garcia, the third bullet point is a quote from CAL FIRE. The notification completes the requirement of fourteen CCR twelve seventy point zero four. For the city of Sierra Madre, the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection will not be reviewing or commenting on the Tentative Track Map.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was referring to. Wasn't, that's what I read in the email, that the first, the first phrase of that, of that quote, that we have completed the requirement.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back to Planning Manager Lynn.
Thank you. So, I just want to point out that this subdivision, subdivision Tentative Track Map also qualifies for the categorical exemption, Class Three, as the residential project is undertaken pursuant to and in conformity to the specific plan, which is exempt from the CEQA. So, the applicant, Newey Sierra Madre, is requesting that the City Council to consider the Tentative Track Map subdividing the seventeen-acre site into forty-two single-family residential lots, six open spaces, and one city public park. The project is also known as the Meadows at Eighty Canyon, located at seven hundred North Sunnyside Avenue. Together with the congregation, Metodol Rosa Community, as a property owner, Newey Sierra Madre submitted the application to the city. And on February first, 2024, the Planning Commission held a public hearing reviewing the plans and adopted a resolution recommending that the City Council conditionally approve the Tentative Track Map, consistent with the specific plan. The purple highlighted area are the plan area that is consistent with the specific plan project boundary. So, the Meadows' plan area boundary is highlighted in yellow and it is located at the terminus of North Sunnyside Avenue, south of the Meadows Del Rosa Retreat Center, west of the LA County Debris Basin and Bailey Canyon Park. They are also surrounded by existing residential single-family developments to the east, to the west, and the south. The site is physically suitable for the residential development. The specific plan contemplated for approximately nine acres of the seventeen-acre project site would be developed for the single-family residential use. Three acre would be developed as roadway. Three acres of the project site would be developed as open space and a neighborhood park. Another one acre will be dedicated to grading and landscaping buffer between the Metodol Rosa and the north portion of the site. These are consistent with the Tentative Track Map that was submitted. City staff, along with planning staff, Public Works, our land surveyor, city engineer, fire department, and fire marshal all reviewed the plan and checked for consistency against the applicable codes and also against the specific plan. It contemplated Sunnyside Avenue, Carter Avenue, A Street, B Street, and C Street would be publicly dedicated to the city as a public street. The site is developed as residential low-density in the general plan land use destination and zoned as residential single-family per the specific plan. The existing topography for the site is downlope, downhill slope in the north-south direction. The proposed topography is approximately two to one, resulting in earthwork importing about thirteen hundred sixty cubic yards. The proposed map design and the improvement is consistent with city's general plan and the Meadows Bailey Canyon specific plan. The project site is physically suitable for the proposed density and the subdivision development. In the specific plan, it established the allowed land use and the design requirement for the site and also the development standards. So, it allows residential, single-family zone and open space zones as show on Table three dash two. The minimum lot size, the minimum lot size is seventy-eight hundred square feet and the setback is fifteen feet for the front. Side yard setback is five feet. And the rear yard setback is fifteen for the lots that's east of Sunnyside Avenue and thirty-five feet for the lots that's west of Sunnyside Avenue. The applicant provided a list on the map that is consistent with all these development standards. Now, going into the Tentative Track Map, that it not only showed the layout of the proposed subdivision, it also included general descriptions and all the associated infrastructures. The Tentative Track Map also sets conditions such as access grading improvements, stormwater protections, and so on, so forth. On sheet three of the map shows the northwest quadrant. The existing Eastman from Southern California Edison and also from the LA County Flood Control. The utility is to be modified and realigned with the new Sunnyside Avenue and also under the new street. There is no existing public access Eastman through or on the private property within the plan area as it is currently a private site and owned by Metodol Rosa. So, there were seventeen existing utility Eastmans that will be modified or quit claimed, all quit claimed or relocation of these utility infrastructures will be proposed to be aligned with the public street to accommodate the project design. The city will also be granted Eastmans related to access, ingress, egress, stormwater drain, water lines, sewer lines. Electrical lines will be at the current location and where the Eastman is, it will be quit claimed to Southern California Edison. Another Eastman that will be granted to LA County Flood Control is the storm drain system that runs in the plan area. So, the design of the subdivision will not conflict with any of the Eastman required by the public at large for access or use of the property within the proposed division. This map depicts lot letter A establish the buffer between Metodol Rosa and A Street. The utility placement will be under the street and the design remain consistent with the single-loaded street and the street only serving one, properties on one side. single-loaded street, and the street only serving ones, properties on one side, on the south. And lot thirty-two through thirty-six will be an open-space lot C right below that, and also the B Street. Moving to the east, the north-east quadrant, it shows the A Street with the sidewalk, and also B Street with sidewalk on both side. And it also depicts the realignment of Carter Avenue. Sheet five of the map showing the quadrant, southwest quadrant, where Sunnyside Avenue, it will be realigned, and it will show the open-space lot D and lot C Street, and lot forty-three is for the public park. The lots on the west side of Sunnyside continue to show the minimum rear yard of thirty-five On this map, you can also see the LA County Flood Control District, their existing thirty-six-inch reinforced concrete pipe storm drain that runs from the adjacent private property to the planned area. It will also realign and drain to the municipal separated storm sewer system. Sheet six of the map continued east at the southeast quadrant, showing C Street as a single-loaded street as well, with sidewalk on both side. And you can also see the proposed stormwater detention basin underneath the proposed park. And the proposed park detention basin includes a retention storage gallery system that is designed to mitigate a fifty-year storm event, which exceeded the city's requirement of the fifty percent percentile in the twenty-four-hour event. The applicant also provided a conceptual landscape plan that shows approximately four-hundred-and-ninety trees will be planted throughout the planned area. It also has a conceptual wall and fence plan that is consistent with the specific plan that were identified in the lots. The proposed retaining wall will not be taller than six feet in height, and it will be terrace, and the terrace retaining wall will be separated by three feet. The submittal of the map also included a set of conditions of approval, and I'd just like to point out that in the event of conflict between any condition in these conditions of approval, the development agreement will control. And also, it is required to obtain approval of a design review permit within twenty-four months after the effective date of the development agreement pursuant to the Development Agreement, section four. This tentative track map project shall expire twenty-four months following the approval, and that is the subdivision map act. And these conditions of approval are in, in, in connection to the subdivision map act, the applicable state standards, California Building Code, Energy Code, Water Code, Fire Findings are included in the staff report for your consideration. Usually findings are in the affirmative, here where the findings has to be in the negative. So staff was not able to make any of these findings, and both staff and the Planning Commission are recommending that the city council approve the tentative track map. This evening, the city council may consider adopt the resolution twenty-four dash twelve as presented, recommending approval of the application subject to the conditions of approval, or adopt the resolution with modification, or deny the application, or continue the The applicant is present, and he also have a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or you would like to see the presentation first.
Does anyone have questions for Manager Lynn before we move on?
I just have some procedural questions, if that's okay. So I get a little confused again in between, of course, this is the track map, but looking at your timelines, we're able to approve other parts of, of this project. So when we're looking at the track map, then parts of those we can, in design, say the landscape design, or, or the, let's see, what was the other, these designs? So that's, how far can we go into approving how this looks, and how this plays out, and how, I mean, what is already approved so the public knows what we can do and what we can't do?
So this application only contemplate the tentative track map, map number eight-three-nine-six-six, the conceptual landscape plan and the retaining wall. Those are part of the requirement that the applicant needs to submit, but we'll have time to review them at the later times.
Okay, and that will become later on, and then with the design review permit?
Correct.
Can I ask a follow-up related to that?
Yes, please.
So a, as a part of this, so are we looking at, at the approval of, let's say, the stormwater retention basin as well? Or, or the width of the roads within the project, I'm not talking about the Carter side, but within the project, are those things that are part of the tentative track map, tracked map, or are they part of another part of the process?
I think the retention basin is at a design stage, and once this is approved, they will have to submit actual construction plan with engineering calculation that for our engineer to review and approve. So it will, it will be a separate process.
I remember the second question was about, sorry, I'm just following up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, so there's a separate process for, for what part of it? Is, so I'm, I'm going to limit my, my question to the stormwater retention. If we approve the tentative track map tonight, is the design of the, the stormwater retention for the project set, has, has that been decided, or is that something that's part of a future stage?
The boundary and the location, it's, it will be decided tonight, it will be that, at that location.
Okay, it's, okay, so it's just the location, thank you.
One more follow-up question aside from also what would be approved by this, where the utilities go, and, and all of that's approved by this track map?
I believe that the engineer provided a section of the street plan, and they comply with the state's, the city's requirement for the location of all the utilities.
And I believe I heard during the Planning Commission meeting that all of the electrical lines will be underground, correct?
Correct. We have confirmed with our applicant at the Planning Commission meeting that all the electrical utility lines that is within the site will be underground.
And what about those that exist currently? Will those be realigned underground, or will they continue to be over?
Our applicant stated in the Planning Commission that all of them will be underground.
That's great, thank you.
That was actually a question that I had regarding, because I did hear, I did hear that during the Planning Commission's discussion. I guess as far as emergency water and fire hydrants, I know there's, were, there's codes regarding that, different gallons-per-minute flows, and, and, and the separation of, of those fire hydrants dependent on those flows. Is that typically seen here within a tentative track map where those locations will be, or is that decided, decided by some water engineer after the fact?
Yeah, so the general guideline and the location will be what is on the tentative track map, but the design of it, it will have to be with the engineer.
Councilmember Goss? So I just have one question. In the presentation, you mentioned the Planning Commission meeting on February fourth, that they recommended the city council conditionally approve. Was there approval conditioned, or was there recommendation that we approve it conditioned on the conditions that you outlined in the, in the report?
Yeah, so there is a set of conditions of approval, so you approve including those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, please.
So I, I want to make sure I understand the months of approval. So on slide twenty, the third bullet says this project shall expire twenty-four months following approval. So I just want to understand what the twenty-four months is based on, going back to slide five where I had a previous question, is it, is it kind of end up becoming a, a twenty-four months that keeps getting pushed out after, say, the parcel, since the design review? Is it then twenty-four months after the design review? Is it twenty-four months after the parcel map? Or is it twenty-four months starting, what, May of twenty twenty-three? What's, what's the twenty-four months based on?
Mayor Protem, if you're relating to the slide twenty, slide twenty, the twenty months after the approval of the tentative track map, so based on the subdivision map act, this tentative track map is only good for twenty-four months. So after they receive the approval, when city council approves it, they only have twenty-four months.
They only have twenty-four months for what? To, to, to do what? What, what do they have to do within twenty-four months? Do they, do they have to break ground? Do they have to build the first unit? Do they have to, what, what do they have to do within twenty-four months? I understand the, the map is good for twenty-four months, but then, okay, so in twenty-four months, what has to happen that, that would say that the map is no longer good? What, what would they have to do or not do?
So first of all, once the tentative track map is approved, they have to record it at the county registrar's office, and then they have all the site improvement and the infrastructure that they'll need to start doing all the engineering, all the plan check review with the city, and they can start construction. So they, they will have to move forward with the map.
And, and to add to that, they'll need to record the map as a, they need to record a final map before the two years expires.
And, and what, what's included in the final map?
So the final map will include the, the same project bound, the lot boundary, and also it needs to have a compliance certificate of compliance, showing that they have or comply with the conditions of approval. You know, all of the items that we listed on there, they have to complete, they have to pass the inspection from Public Works, from fire marshal, from our fire department.
And, and just one other addition there, un, under the development agreement, the acquisition of the Carter Avenue right-of-way shall be a prerequisite to the, to the recordation of the final track map. So if the applicant is unable to obtain the Carter Avenue right-of-way from the county within, within two years, then they'll need to come back to this body to renegotiate the terms of the development agreement.
May I ask a question, Plan Director Lynn? Did we find, did we talk to LA County about this regarding at the special meeting? Was there any feedback on, on approval of, of their easement on the LA County portion?
Yes, so we had a meeting with LA County Public Works Department supervisors, and they were updating us the status. I also received another status from our applicant saying that they have already finalized all the maps and the plans, and it was submitted to LA County. And from LA County Department of Public Works, they said that they are ready to approve the project.
Madam Mayor, I have one other question.
Yes.
So, so, so are, are, is our LID requirements, are they based on like a one, like a one-inch or one-and-a-half-inch storm event over twenty-four hours? Is that correct?
I'll defer the question to Analyst Carson.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Robert Parkers. Our LID requirement is the eighty-fifth percentile twenty-four-hour storm in Sierra Madre. It's anywhere from one-point-zero-nine to one-point-sixteen, depending how high you are in elevation. And that's, that has, that's considered full capture by LA County. And the, and, and the, the construction of the retention basin is quite a bit more overbuilt than, than what we require for our residential and even commercial or city projects in town.
So maybe I don't fully understand the LID requirements, and I think you may know where I'm headed with this, but when we think about that storm event we had from February tenth through thirteenth, where we were getting something like over nine inches of rain within a twenty-four-hour period, will this, you know, will this be able to address an event like that? Are we going to get extra flooding come through it? Is it, like, will we capture most of the water in the stormwater? Like, help me understand kind of how, how the retention basin, and, and if you don't know, that, that's fine, we can address it at a subsequent phase, because I don't think we have to decide it tonight, but I'm, I'm trying to process the, the stormwater retention basin, and like, how is it going to help us in, in, in the most recent storm event that we just saw?
Sure, I think we were a little bit fortunate, and I think you're talking, was it February third to fifth, or there was a three, three-day storm event we had at the very beginning of February. I think the cumulative rain totals we got in Sierra Madre over the three days was ten inches. So I don't think we really got to an eight-inch over twenty-four hour during that storm event. The other benefit we had is we didn't have the, the cloud burst, or the very intense short period of rain that can really do more damage than the long-term steady volume. The way I understand the fifty-year storm to be calculated, within the county, which is a really wide basin, it's between five and six inches over twenty-four hours, as opposed to one-point-oh-nine with our LID. We have actually had discussions with Director Yanez and some of their engineers. We asked them to show us what a hundred-year storm would be, and they did some very, you know, quick modeling. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, something that we would review officially, but we were pretty satisfied with the results of even a hundred-year storm, where there would be a little bit of water coming off of this property. With the fifty-year storm, they're going to capture all of that, they're going to capture on-site the storms that we had at the beginning of the February month.
Thank you very much. That, that's all the questions I had.
Councilmember Goss?
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So this is kind of going back to the, the fire hydrant thing that I asked Planner Lynn. I see on, I'm looking at these documents here, and I see on like the existing lot where the- And I see on like the existing lot, uh, where the existing fire hydrants are, and I'm looking through all of these. And I, I, I didn't apply for the planning commission for a reason. I, this stuff just baffles me. I don't, I, I, I'm trying to read this stuff and I, I can read most of it, and I see proposed water, existing water, proposed sewer, existing sewer, proposed storm water. I just want, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we're doing right by our residents. And obviously there will be fire hydrants there, and I don't know if it's required at this point, but I don't see them anywhere. And I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. Um, if we're going to approve this thing or vote to either approve or deny, I want to make sure that we've, we've considered all these issues. So if anybody could answer me that question.
Councilmember Garcia, I'm happy to, to answer that question. So I can tell you that, um, as early as maybe three years ago, um, we did do some analysis to, to determine that the water system could handle the, the fire flows needed for the project. Um, and at the time, we looked at, uh, the size of the mains that would be required. And hydraulically, um, our water system, um, is capable of supplying, uh, the, the fire suppression needed for this project.
That's, that's, that's amazing, great to know. And I, and I assume that we would do our due diligence there, but like I'm seeing things like light poles and utility boxes and curbs and gutters, but I'm not seeing hydrants. Is that, this is the first time I've been looking at a document like this, so I don't know if that's typically in a document like this. I don't know who, who I would ask, um, maybe the applicant or fire chief. Um, but I know we're going to have fire hydrants up there, but I just want to make sure that we, I don't care where they are, I just want to make sure they're there.
To briefly kind of hopefully answer that question, uh, Councilmember Garcia, is, is, you won't find these on the tentative track map. They will be forthcoming. Once, uh, kind of like the grading plans and all the, all these other things come into play and when, when we're, we're getting a bigger picture of it, if you will. Um, but even more detail, our fire marshal is here to answer that kind of question as well. That's why we pay him and ask him to be up here as well. But, um, you will not see them on, on this.
Okay, so that, that was my assumption, because I, I assumed that there'd have to be some kind of engineer's report, like you were saying, grading and all those things. And this isn't really at that level yet, where we're having engineer reporting on that. So I wanted to make sure, this isn't the time that we're looking for this. Uh, it's, it's at a time in the future.
That is correct.
Amazing, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Gus, you might want to stay for this one. I have one more question, sorry. Um, it came up when we were doing, um, to be fair, we, we visited the location during our analysis of, um, how, how fire resistant we are and fire hardening with CAL FIRE and with LA County Fire, um, Forestry. And it came up that, um, there are some, some, it's not permits, but more like in codes that you can use to inhabit as well as in the planning phase. And we noticed that some of our other properties have an issue, like while, after this track, uh, uh, map is approved, once we go into design phase, that this, this clearance, how often do we, do we, I guess let me reword this. How often do we check for clearance of brush and, and area around there during the building process? Where does that fall under? Does that go under the design aspect also? Does that go under, do you know?
If, if I'm understanding the, the question, you're, during development, as is going on, before structures, before everything else, or during the structures?
Yeah, all the above.
All, all through the construction. Um, we will be, we will be inspecting it, in, in my opinion, as far as, uh, we would with any other residence within the community or with any area within the very high fire hazards of Verde Zone, and that's, that's annually. Um, if there is a question or a need for additional inspections, we are always happy to drive up there and take a look. But, um, what we do is typically annually, we will go in there and that's about ready to come up again for the season. So, um, about, uh, every May, April, May timeframe, we're, we're doing those inspections. Uh, but typically, we're going to set forth the requirements for which we're, we're looking at, where they're going to put their supplies and their materials, they, it's going to be within, you know, uh, out of range of combustibles, other combustibles, vegetation, and things like that. Fire hydrants will be in place before they, uh, drop off materials and, and that, and such like that. So there will be some ongoing inspections, but not necessarily brush inspections, if you will. That happens annually.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful.
Okay, if we're done with questions, which I think we are, I guess we should open for public comment.
Chief, Madam Mayor, I, I had one, one other question, uh, on this. And, and that is, it's, it's a general question. Were there any other conditions put on by the planning commission? If, if I remember correctly, the only condition that the planning commission put on the recommendations to council was the, um, CAL FIRE, uh, requirement. Is, is that correct?
Uh, Mayor, perhaps it'd be a good idea to get into the record statements by our fire marshal, since, since he's here, he can talk about the process. In addition, I believe the applicant had a presentation as well.
Okay, yes, oh, that's right, thank you. Um, sure, yes, if it's a fire marshal, wouldn't mind coming forward and reading into the record the, um, communication that you've had with CAL FIRE on the issue of their review and comment on the track map, tentative track map.
Absolutely, thank you very much, uh, members of city council, Madam Mayor. Uh, I did have an extensive discussion with members of CAL FIRE at the Sacramento level um, regarding the specific statute that was referenced out of Title 14, the Natural Resources Code. They were already aware of, I will say, a discrepancy in how that code could be interpreted. They're in the process of correcting that language currently right now, uh, with the Office of Administrative Law. But as, with anything in state, once a statute's published, published, that does take time. So, um, in lieu of that, we opted to basically make notification as was written in the current statute, so that we can be able to check the box and say, we made notification. The, um, CAL FIRE unit out of San Bernardino handles Los Angeles County, because there is no CAL FIRE unit in LA County. Uh, that went to their unit chief, and they in turn pushed that information back up to Sacramento. And a staff chief with the State Fire Marshal's Office did write the response, um, basically what we already knew was going to happen. The state of California does not have any regulatory authority over any LRA, local responsibility area of land, regardless of whether it's in the very high fire hazard responsibility area or any of the future responsibility areas that will come when we bring a map forward, uh, in future years, um, to remap the city. So, we chose to comply with the process as it's written, and that was the response that they gave us, um, saying, thank you very much, we will have no further comment, and you've met the burden of the statute as it's existing, writ, legally written.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, I ju, uh, I guess it's more of a comment.
Okay, let's wait for comments. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else have a question for the fire marshal? All right, great. Sorry, if, uh, the applicant wouldn't mind approaching and, and providing their, um, presentation.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, good evening, members of the council. Once again, Jonathan Frankel on behalf of New Urban West. Uh, it's great to be back with all of you, and we're really excited to be here for what is the very first step in the implementation phase um, of, of the Meadows Project. It's a major milestone for us, and, and we really appreciate your consideration of this action this evening. Uh, obviously, as you know, um, this is a year, well, over four years for us um, in processing and, in thinking, conceiving of this project and working on it. And that happened after dozens and dozens and dozens, hundreds actually, of meetings, both small format and workshops. I think there's a picture in one of these meetings of our joint planning commission and city council session at the middle school, uh, which I think was, it was an unprecedented sort of meeting that we had, really to try and gather feedback as from, uh, from as many stakeholders as possible. Um, it's really been a joy to have the opportunity to get to know the Sierra Madre community. Uh, whether that's the Wisteria Festival, or the Fourth of July, or the Mount Woodson Trail Race, or seeing the improvements to the post office. Um, you know, a- all of these wonderful things, that the community here really is, uh, unique. Um, and, uh, and so is this project, and, and we're, we're really excited to keep it moving. Obviously, also very excited that the voters of Sierra Madre supported this project twice, uh, at the ballot box. Um, again, what we think is, is an unprecedented approval, um, for a project of this scale in California. Uh, as you well know, um, we, we really believe the project has a lot of benefits. And, and this action tonight is, is a small step in the direction of realizing, uh, m- many of these things for the community and for the city of Sierra Madre. Obviously, the preservation of many acres of hillside lands, um, uh, impact fees, a new three acre public park. And of course, um, the first, uh, option for new homes in Sierra Madre to be 100% electric. Um, and really allow buyers to think about their, their carbon footprint. I'll speak about Carter Avenue widening in a moment, and I know that, uh, I want to provide you an update on, on that as well. So, um, the track map tonight, obviously you saw, you know, very technical in nature. Um, really about technical engineering details about where the utilities will be, how, you know, the exact dimension of our streets. Um, and we really appreciate the thoroughness of staff's review, uh, the city engineers, city public work staff, fire department, planning department. We've all worked very diligently with them to ensure that, uh, the bottom line tonight, uh, is that this tentative track map is completely consistent with what we presented to you in the specific plan. The same number of units, of course, 42, the minimum lot size, we meet that requirement. The required setbacks, the park, parking, uh, street layout, planting and landscape, wall and fencing, um, et cetera. So, um, just want to give you a quick update on where we are with Carter Avenue, uh, the acquisition of that right of way from the county, uh, and make a couple other, uh, quick clarifications. Um, firstly, just so that the council members of the public are aware, the, uh, the application to LA County is for the city of Sierra Madre to acquire an easement for public road and right of way purposes. So, the, we are not, New Urban West is not buying any property, the city is not buying any property. There's no transfer of any of the existing wilderness park to either the developer or the city. Um, what we're doing is, again, simply acquiring an easement from the county to allow the public safety improvements to be made to Carter Avenue. Uh, and that includes, of course, the inclusion of an ADA accessible sidewalk. Uh, and this was in response to many of the public comments we received in the project's EIR, uh, which stated that during the weekends and at busy times, it can be difficult for people to access the park, especially those with disabilities. Um, the, the Carter widening also provides flood protection improvements for the existing neighbors. Um, today, there is no curb, curb and gutter, um, on Carter Avenue. And so in a large storm like we've had recently, that water will run down the street and into, uh, across driveways and into people's property. That will no longer be the case with the improvements. There will be an eight inch curb and gutter there that will direct water into a new catch basin that's placed on the south side of the street. Um, so those are a, a, a number of benefits we think are important. Uh, and we've been working very diligently to deliver that. As Planning Manager Lynn mentioned, we have submitted a complete application to LA County. That's currently under review, and we look forward to working through, uh, any technical issues. And ultimately, um, the value of the easement that is acquired is, does not exceed a certain threshold that requires Board of Supervisors approval. Meaning this can be done administratively at the staff level, that once the engineering team is signed off to say, this works for us, um, staff can go ahead and grant the easement again to the city, uh, to the city of Sierra Madre. Uh, just one other clarification with respect to the undergrounding of utilities. Um, so all of the utilities serving the new development will be undergrounded. There are however, some existing, uh, power lines that serve adjacent properties. And where there is infrastructure that is serving an existing residence, um, those will remain in place. Because we can't traverse onto somebody's property, uh, on somebody's private property in order to underground the lines. That would require us to trench and get in their yards and do a whole bunch of other, you know, things that, that the owners probably would not want us doing. So that infrastructure will remain in place where it's serving offsite properties. Onsite, though, all of the utilities will be undergrounded. Um, and with that, concludes my presentation. Of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll open this up for questions. I'll start with, uh, Mayor Protem, given that he's on the phone.
Um, I don't have any questions for, uh, the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just have one question. There, I don't know if there's a difference in nomenclature, but in the, in your presentation, you talk about a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. In, um, Manager Lynn's, uh, presentation, she talks about lot area minimum being 7,800 square feet. I just wanted to know if that's, those words mean something different, or if the numbers are not consistent?
Yeah, so I think we're talking about the same thing. I think it's just a little bit of, bit of semantics. So I think what the planning manager's, uh, number was referring to was the actual proposed lot sizes. And the number I used was the minimum required by the specific plan. So our lot sizes are a little bit bigger than the minimum required in the plan. Um, they're, they're just a little bit larger.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, now for public comment, and then, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first speaker card is from Pat Alcorn.
Good evening, council, mayor, and council people. I'm Pat Alcorn, and I live on Grandview. Seems like anything I wanted to say tonight was, has been really completely covered. I was just going to mention the, the, uh, fire, uh, CAL FIRE communication again. And it seems like, uh, you've, as a city, have covered that very well. And so I just urge you to, um, not hesitate to approve this project, this tentative track map tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the next speaker card is from Philip Yao.
Uh, good evening, city council. Philip Yao, 513 Sierra Keys Drive. I had a prepared item, but I think, uh, after all that I heard today, I'm going to change gears a little bit. From what it sounds like, you guys don't have the overall process, or the understanding of the overall process, to even begin the first step of approving the TTM. Uh, I heard questions being asked about what the next steps are. We really should understand all the steps before we approve the initial step. You know, that's, uh, good engineering, and that's my, you know, bread and butter. So that's one thing I like to caution you guys. Please, you know, don't approve what you think is a very innocent little beginning step unless you really know the overall process. You would instruct your kids to do that in everyday application of anything that they might endeavor on. Don't approve until CADA is resolved, and there are reasons for that. Now, quickly, not use up my time, but please don't try to do that. Um, someone asked about grading. The tentative track map does show grading, but this developer has never shown us projected grading, has never really defined the amount of soil that's going to be disturbed in this overall process, this overall Meadows development. I know we had asked for it during planning, we had asked for it in city council before, but never gotten it. Okay, so just go back and, and whip out your, your notes, and you might be able to, uh, confirm what I have said. The total rainfall that was presented, I live right at the edge of Mata de la Rosa. And, uh, very informal, I do collect rain, and it's much more than had previously been presented. It wasn't over 10 inches. It was substantially over. So if you were trying to compare rainfall in the center town versus rainfall by, you know, the hillside there, you have to collect the right data. Okay, and please do that, because it would be ten amount to really malpractice for not understanding what the total rainfall really is. Okay, then back to my, uh, I got about a minute left. I originally wanted to bring up to your attention, we've had some significant events that happened within the last, oh, say, year or so. Okay, um, there's been some number of wildfires, and I'm just going to mention the Lahaina one that went, that was over in Maui. People learn not to build an isolated community, even though you might be surrounded with an ocean. Okay, because that one has taught us a lot of really things that we should consider before we approve a project like this. Uh, access, namely CADA is one of them. Uh, communications, um, just last Thursday, you know, AT&amp;T lost service. And millions of people were impacted, and subsequently it cascaded to other carriers. So please consider that as being, uh, important issues to address before you approve a project like this. Uh, one last item, people never consider, if your car is in that fire zone, it in, in fact is a very high fire hazard item. Because, uh, even if it were to be a electric car, they do burn. But certainly gasoline and diesel, uh, has proven to be very ignitable in the past. So, um, I exceeded my time. I want to thank you. You are at a point to make really serious decisions, serious decisions. And, and the decision should be made towards the safety of our community place.
Thank you, Mr. Yao.
Madam Mayor, we have no other speaker cards, nor the city. One speaker, one more speaker.
I just, uh, hi, thank you. Uh, just real quick comments. 12 more meetings maybe, or 13? Wow, this, this really is the never ending project. It's gone on so long, I've gone from not needing reading glasses to needing reading glasses. glasses. The tentative track map meets requirements of the specific plan, as near as I can tell. No one has said anything, it, that any part of it doesn't meet the requirements of the specific plan. So, it's not about Carter, it's not about the EIR, it's not about how much dirt is being removed, it's not about the fire risk or communications, all that's already been dealt with. So, I mean, you really just have one job, and that's to determine if the, uh, track map meets the requirements of the specific, specific plan, which it seems it does. I mean, I would say the same thing I said at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, about the number of meetings left, which is, I mean, is it five meetings or fifteen? And I'd hate to see the city end up in a situation where they get through five meetings, and then the California Housing Authority says, "Yeah, it is a five-meeting limit." So, you know, I would just keep that in mind, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby.
Madam Mayor, no other speaker cards.
Okay, so, back to the council for discussion. Who'd like to start?
So, is, you know, as we be, as we're spoken to from, uh, a public hearing, um, the criteria for the review is state law, the development agreement, the specific plan in Title XVI. Everything else is outside the purview of, of the criteria for approving or not approving this subdivision. Um, that's kind of, we're being told we have, uh, free rein to make decisions, but I, I think we're, we're bound by these, um, by these points. So, uh, I would hate for the council to go off the rails and, uh, go against housing, housing laws and housing rules, um, so let's, I want to make sure that we keep it within the purview of what we can speak on.
Thank you.
I agree too, and, and part of that was, the only contingency was if it was a, a hazard where, where we would have to find that it can't be mitigated. And when we went up there with Cal Fire, and we went up with, um,
We asked questions while we were there.
LA County Fair, we were asking all of these same questions, and they, we were looking down in Bailey Canyon, we looked all over the, the other projects in our city. Um, we took them on a tour of every project up against the mountain, in any region, all the way through the canyon, and that was the location, they said, which was the safest, by far the safest.
To be clear, you mean, you mean the?
The Meadows Project. Because of where they cleared the land north, it's also in the, in the plan that they had to clear, um, a section north of the actual monastery, uh, monaster, I call it the monastery, sorry, the monastery. Also to the east and the west, they looked at, um, and any patterns of how it would fo- follow through there, the newer materials they used, the new zoning that's changed that we're coming into, that we just looked at in our, in our, um, uh, that we put out to the city about different zones, and how much space has to be hardened around a home of five feet. So, when we were asking them questions, we asked those specific questions over and over again, and they kept constantly saying that that region there was the safest. In fact, it's less safe as a, as a field of grass or dry grass, it's way less safe because the fire can race further through that area, so.
I think, yeah, they were happy to see that those Chinese elms had been trimmed.
Oh, yeah, they listed that, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Cross?
I don't really have much to add to that. I mean, I, I feel like, um, Mr. Gertie had it nailed pretty much, this has to conform with the specific plan. If we find that it doesn't, we can't support it. If we find that it does, we do support it. I find that it does. I don't see any compelling evidence to suggest it doesn't. Haven't seen it in the testimony, and I haven't seen it in the staff report, so that's where I'm at.
Yeah, and I, I asked that question regarding, uh, Title XIV or Section XIV of the Cal Fire, and they said, "No, that's, that's LRA, the local, uh, zone, not an SRA and FRA." And I'd just like to commend our, um, our Fire Marshal Mets for doing the due diligence, even though he has an understanding of one thing, just going the extra mile and making sure that we at least tick the box, um, with the existing law. Uh, so, um, we got our answer, and that, that chapter can be closed.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, um, I'll echo with a lot, a lot of what other people said. Uh, you know, this was, uh, gone through detail at the Planning Commission. We are limited to, to just the tentative track map, uh, that it, uh, complies with the specific plan. I think it does, and, and I, I will echo what others have said, is that, you know, I really appreciate staff's due diligence at running the, the Cal Fire issue to ground and really investigating that and, and addressing that part of it. Uh, I, I am, um, in support of, of, uh, where we are in the process, and, um, you know, I do think we need to understand the, the timing impacts of it, that's the only thing that I think is, is outstanding in anything, um, but I think that that doesn't, that doesn't affect the decision that we have before us tonight.
Thank you. I mean, I agree with everything, in particular around the, the scope of our review, and, I mean, I, the number of, um, depart, city departments, um, city staff, our engineer, our fire marshal, um, you know, our, our hired, uh, outside third-party, um, plan check with Will Dan, and all of their expertise brought to bear. I mean, the number of people who have reviewed this with, in those, um, those limitations around whether or not this tentative track map comports with the specific plan, I mean, that gives me the comfort that I need. I mean, I personally am not going to be able to verify that this, you know, very technical map complies with the very technical aspects of the specific plan, but I can look at the information that was presented to us at, at the, at the level at which I can make that assessment, and I can personally make that assessment, and then I'm relying on the expertise of quite a number of, of, you know, people that have, have, have reviewed this, and I assume has had a back-and-forth process with the applicant. So, I am very much satisfied that we've done our, um, our job here, and, and I, I'm happy to rely on the recommendation, both of the staff that reviewed it and the Planning Commission that delved pretty deeply into it as well. So, that's my position, and unless, unless there's more discussion, I'd be, it sounds like we have a consensus, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move approval of tentative track map twenty-two oh-one, including vesting of tentative track map eighty-three nine-six-six for the subdivision of the seventeen-acre site into forty-two single-family residential lots, six open-space lots and one city public park at seven-hundred North Sunnyside Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's the most detailed motion we've ever had. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, um, second public hearing, I think we'll go a little bit faster. Um, consideration of adoption of Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, authorizing the allocation of twenty-four twenty-five CDBG fund, uh, relating to the continuation of our senior minor home rehabilitation program.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This might seem really familiar to you, because we were just here last month establishing the program, and, um, CDBG requires po- public participation of, um, this program every year before city council to allocate the fund towards the program that we establish. Um, so it will be the same program, and will continue the same senior, um, minor home rehabilitation program to the next fiscal year, twenty-four twenty-five. However, I would like to, um, provide you with an update regarding the current program that, um, staff issued an RFP to the public to solicit for the consulting services to administer the, um, CDBG program right after city council approved the resolution. And we, um, published that RFP for thirty days, and we have identified one consultant that, um, is very capable and with, um, a lot of experience with other cities already that is willing to take us on. Um, so currently, we're just waiting for the LA County Community, um, Authority to approve the process of that, um, contract, and once that is, um, secured, then we will, um, start the program to, um, to solicit for, um, the three seniors for this current year, and then another three seniors for the next, the following year.
So, at this point, we wouldn't need to, um, extend the program officially through the city council until the, the twenty-five twenty-six fiscal year, correct?
Um, so, um, this staff report is for city council to allocate the fund for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five to continue the CDBG program.
Right, so that, what, that will, will you, will be done now through the next, this fiscal year and next fiscal year, and we won't need to think about this again until the one after that?
The following January, I think January was their deadline, so next January, we'll come back again and report on the existing program, and also ask for a allocation for the future year.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, so, is this something that required two meetings, or was it because there was the error that you found that it came back to us? I'm just trying to understand why it, uh, why we're, why we're seeing it again, that, why we're seeing it for the second time. Could you help me understand that part?
Um, Mayor Protem, so, this resolution is to allocate the future funding, the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. The one that, uh, we approved last month was for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four.
Ah, thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
All right, if no further questions, I will...
I don't see any comment cards.
I was gonna say, I will, I will stall for a public comment.
It was a public hearing.
If anyone in the audience wants to give public comment, please feel free to come up without a card. All right, um, I don't believe we got any, um, public comment, uh, via email, I did not see any, so I think, um, I will officially close public comment. Um, can bring it back to the council, I personally, you know, this is just a continuation of what we approved before, I see no issue with, with extending it out to make sure that we comply with CDBG's request.
Yeah, I'm with you, and we'll have something already done for the next year's budget, so that's good.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, authorizing the allocation of fiscal year twenty thousand twenty-four to twenty thousand twenty-five CDBG funds to continue the senior minor home rehabilitation program. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mash, motion passes. All right, on to discussion. Is it too late to reorder this?
Yeah, I was asking the same thing.
I'm going to request that we maybe have the update on our local transportation subcommittee, since we have folks in the audience here to do that, and then we will put that ahead of the general plan progress report. Is that okay, Planner Wolf? Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The, this evening's first discussion is an item, uh, is an update on the progress of the local transportation ad hoc subcommittee. The subcommittee was formed last summer, consisting of volunteers with a desire to improve transportation options to the residents and visitors of the community. It is comprised of Roxy Bartlett and Ann Palmer of the Community Services Commission, Ann is here with us tonight, Jackie Pergola of the Senior Services Commission, Justin Garcia and Max Romero representing the students and youth, and you see Max is here tonight as well, uh, John Lloyd, who is a resident transportation advocate, and the subcommittee meetings are also attended by Councilmember, uh, Goss and Mayor Protem Parhurst. The three core tasks of the subcommittee are to, number one, improve the local transportation program with a new program by July first of, of twenty-twenty-four. Number two, advocate on behalf of the residents and visitors for regional transportation opportunities. And number three, create a long-term plan for transportation, including the incorporation of active transportation and enhanced safety. This item is before you this evening, because the subcommittee has made significant progress on efforts to improve both the local transportation program, as well as a new partnership with Metro to consider bringing one bus line back to Sierra Madre. Local transportation, the subcommittee has developed a strategy for issuing an RFP for new services, again, with the goal of having a new program here by July first of twenty-twenty-four. Essentially, the RFP will go out asking for an hourly rate charges for both curb-to-curb services and fixed route services. Once the proposals are in, the subcommittee will be able to discuss the best options to fill the need of the community and visitors, and also try to tie into the neighboring existing local programs, such as in Pasadena, Arcadia, and Foothill Transit, which goes to the east. The new program will also be customized with the consideration of a possible new bus route. So, in a, in a nutshell, the RFP that the subcommittee has been working on is meant to be a little bit of a buffet. Once we start to get the components of a fixed route, curb-to-curb, one or the other, or a combination of both, that will work with a bus line, if we get that, we will have the flexibility to do some, some, some tinkering there to make a really good program. On the regional level, Subcommittee Member Max Romero has taken the lead to open new partnership with, with Metro. Currently, feasibility studies and route modeling exercises are being conducted. The Metro team will provide additional recommendations and steps to pursue the return of the two-sixty-eight line, if and when they become apparent. Staff would like to take this opportunity to highlight what an effective and passionate group of volunteers this ad, uh, ad hoc subcommittee has become. We would also like to take a quick pause and answer any questions that the city council may have, as well as receive any direction on our course of work. Thank you, and I'd be happy to address your questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, um, Management Analyst Carson, if you could remind me, I always get, uh, the measures and the props mixed up. Uh, there's, there's measure, or Prop A and Measure M, I know they both have to do, I think they both have to do transportation. So, our local transportation, how is that, because we, we've heard how much it costs per ride because of our ridership, how is that funded? What is the, the source for that?
Sure, there, there's even some confusion with other Prop As that might deal with recreation, but our local transportation program is funded with Metro's Prop A local return funds.
And do we have, do we carry a fund balance with that within our own city, if you know, or is that?
Yes, we do. We, we've actually developed a bit of a fund balance that will allow us a little flexibility going forward when we're taking a look at our options.
So, we'll, we'll have, we'll have flexibility as far as, uh, picking maybe something that meets our, our standards here of the city, uh, we have enough funds for that. Um, through, through this, it's, it's not coming out of our general fund, it's coming through these funds, correct?
Currently, that is the path we're taking, is not to touch the general fund. One of the items that we, uh, pretty much have an agreement on is that we would like the new contractor to provide the vehicle or vehicles.
Okay.
Um, whether that's a lease, whether that's a purchase or whatever, that's something that we have really discussed quite a bit about, and we think that's favorable for the city as a whole.
So, if you know, like, what is the, I know we, we've deferred a lot of maintenance on that fleet, but what, what is like the annual maintenance cost and/or, let's say, the annual cost of retention of, uh, one of those vehicles?
Well, both of those grant-funded vehicles have passed their, um, life, um, their service time. One of them is no longer operating, the other one is being held together with the, um, talents of our mechanic, Donnie. It really, he's doing a fantastic job, it's taking him a lot of work. I don't know that the expenses are ridiculous, but the air conditioner doesn't work well, and we're not gonna change that out. There's a lot of little things like that. We have to keep the elevator component running, so that's just a requirement that we have with our grant and our ADA compliance, but we really would like to have the contractor provide the vehicle or vehicles going forward.
And, um, considering that we, we narrowed, uh, the boulevard a little bit, um, I might have a little bit of inside baseball here, but, um, did, has, has MTA assessed whether or not they could come through the boulevard, and that's safe and within their, within their codes and everything?
Yeah, they did a quick run, and, uh, our subcommittee, Max, got to, got to do a ride. I got a little bit of feedback from that, and they said that the little bit of a narrow isn't too big of an, of, of issue. One thing they want to get back to me on with some more specifics, and this came in after my report, was, um, getting ADA, um, compliance at the certain sta- after my report, was getting ADA compliance at the certain stops, and they're going to give me a lot of detail on that. We have an idea that our downtown district assessment might be a fund that we could use for those type of improvements. Once I get the details, I'll know a little bit more about what they're going to need on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. With all of your research and all of the activities and the power you guys are, especially Max, thank you, are pushing forward to get this done so much quicker than we anticipated. Are we looking at some of, are you guys discussing with, say, police department or any other entities on any negative, I shouldn't say negative, with any other issues that might come up with the coming back of our transportation?
But we are always looking, we're always trying to anticipate, you know, what we're not thinking of. In fact, your staff report had a few considerations on local control when it concerns development. If we start to see unhoused people increase as a result of the Metro, I know that our city manager is really diving into regional unhoused programs as we speak, so we're doing our best to be prepared for something like that if it's needed.
Thank you. Councilor Goss?
I'll save my comment.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, I had two questions. Analyst Carlson, when, I don't know that I caught exactly when the RFP would go out. Is it going to go out in the next week or two, or what's the timing of that?
Yeah, that's one of the major reasons we thought it was good to come up and be in front of the city council before that RFP goes out. So, now unless I get direction otherwise, I assume that'll go out within a week or two.
Great, excellent. And then, one of the things we talked about in the committee was the timing with that with an upcoming board meeting. Can you remind me, has that timing changed because of the feedback we've gotten from Metro? Because there was a Metro meeting coming up, and we were trying to get, there was some timing, I don't know if I'm making complete sense, but there was some timing that we were trying to make sure, that we were trying to hit to be prepared for the end of the contract and the upcoming Metro meeting. Can you speak to a little bit of that?
Yeah, and I have to agree with you. I got a little bit confused myself, you know, with some of the activity that Metro's doing. One of their main planners for the region, a gentleman by the name of Wayne Wassell, was in a meeting with Supervisor Barker. He has been very communicative, and he's going to assist us, making sure we know where we need to be at what time, if we need to be somewhere at what time. We will probably discuss even with him on like, who should come and represent Sierra Madre? Is it going to be our wonderful volunteers on the subcommittee? Are we going to approach our elected officials? He's, I, he's going to be giving us a lot of insight on how to approach that.
And should we ride public transportation and tell them how long it took us to get there from here?
Or an electronic bike, maybe, right?
Does that answer your question?
And, 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 and,[861.63]
Uh-oh, okay.
Just regarding the staff report, so I just, I know it's stated in the staff report, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna have it as a question because not everybody reads the staff reports. You know, I know that a lot of cities are having issues meeting the regional housing needs assessment number, the RENA number. We were fortunate to get ours certified early, so that didn't have, that wasn't an issue, but I know a lot of times, RENA numbers are based upon the number, the amount of public transportation that comes through your city. Am I right to, in saying that our RENA numbers for the last cycle contemplated when we had two bus lines?
That's correct.
And so if we bring a bus line back, it's not going to necessar-- well, we don't, we never know what RENA's gonna do, right? But it's not gonna necessarily, all other things equal, increase our RENA numbers because that bus line comes back.
Yeah, the Planning Manager Lynn and I have had a number of talks about this, and you're correct. It's really hard to state positively one way or the other with RENA and it, the next cycle being so far out, you know, being eight years out. Would we ever get a bus line back, or would we ever decline to get a bus line back for eight to the ten years in the light of the way the development stuff is going? So considering that the RENA numbers were being calculated when we had the two bus lines, we wouldn't expect having one bus line to be an incremental increase because of the one bus line. I don't think that the numbers are gonna go down, but that's, that's the best I could do in this section. I was trying to give you all the possibilities on how it might affect our development and our local control, especially, you know, being downtown.
That's helpful. I mean, these unintended consequences are things that we, that you did a very good job at anticipating, so thank you.
On that front, you noted sort of two things that kind of run through the housing development laws related to transportation. One is something with respect to the type of stop, and there's a specific term. And then the other is a, the existence of a line that has stops that come every fifteen minutes or something to that effect. You did notice, note that currently at the stops that would be reincorporated would not qualify as such a stop that would trigger all of these development, lax development standards, I guess I would say. But would the reintroduction of the bus line qualify as this, you know, this bus line, I forget the exact term?
Sure, sure. And again, I wanna thank City Attorney Garagossian to help me kind of navigate through this too. And I think the term you're looking for is a major transit stop.
Right, which you said we wouldn't have.
Is the intersection of two or more major bus routes with a frequency of fifteen minutes or more. So as long as we're just looking at one, I think we avoid that major transit stop designation.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, I don't have any further questions. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, this is a discussion item. There's no--
Public comment?
Do you have, yeah, we'll have public comment, but do you have, you know, are you, are you looking for any specific feedback other than the discussion, just so that we know?
Yeah, I would really love, you know, questions and discussion. We didn't wanna take that next step without checking in with City Council.
Okay. All right, so I will open this up for public comment.
Good evening, City Council members. I am back again. Thank you to the subcommittee members present this evening. A couple of things that I would like to address. First off, any unanswered questions that might have gone, I guess, unanswered? First, so I was on the test trip that Metro ran through, and some of the feedback, the initial feedback that I had received was that the old bus stops had been grandfathered in, meaning that because bus service was removed and re, and will be reinstated, the bus stops which previously may not have qualified under ADA compliance or any other regulations that Metro now has need to be up to date and up to standard with the current regulations that Metro uses in its bus stops. Another question that was asked was things about safety on the metro route or having unhoused persons into the city of Sierra Madre. Being a frequent rider on the 268, I have not seen any or that many unhoused persons or any safety concerns that I could identify. I definitely think it's something that as a subcommittee we should address into the future, but with my experiences, I think it's a line that is fairly safe and will provide very well, very good connectivity to the city with a frequency of thirty minutes on peak rush hour times throughout weekdays and hourly schedules throughout the day and then into the weekends, providing weekend service for the city. Something else that I would like to address that we also spoke about tonight was that the subcommittee has also had some award of a focus on first and last mile connectivity, meaning that connecting from that bus stop to your destination or from your original point of origin to that bus stop. So something that we've addressed in the committee is pedestrian safety and bicyclist safety. So we are called the Public Transportation Subcommittee, but I like to think of it as a mobility committee because we are also, one of our main goals is to promote safe, easy, and accessible mobility to all the citizens of Sierra Madre. So I would like to think of that as an expanded scope of work that we perform as a subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero.
Good comment.
Go with your comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Nothing to approve, but, I mean, personally, I think that the direction that the Housing Subcommittee is going in, including the RFP as described, is, you know, what I, what I would expect, and I'm actually probably exceeds my expectation in terms of, you know, where I thought we would be at this point. So I, I am fully in favor of, of the proposed plan ahead, so I will throw that out there.
Here, here, the expediency of this subcommittee is something to be recognized. You know, they formed fairly quickly and they're getting stuff done quicker than, than most bureaucracy-type, or, you know, subcommittees from a quasi-government agency. So I, I know, hats off to them being focused and getting things done.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to comment on the experience on the committee. It's been very, very pleasant, wonderful people to work with. Management Analyst Carlson's done a fantastic job of keeping us on task. I do wanna say that the meeting that Max helped set, did set up between the entire subcommittee and Met, remember, we, the entire committee was on Zoom with the members of the Met, and each one of us took our turn talking to them about what our, our take was on the bus issue. And I think, when they were done, they, they said that they had never had that kind of experience before where they had such a representative group from the community talking to them about a specific issue that they could address meaningfully. And I really feel that that, that, just the, just the existence of the subcommittee and the, the timing of that meeting, I think, made all the difference in getting that bus line back because I don't know of anybody on the subcommittee prior to that meeting that really thought we were gonna have a shot at getting a bus line back. It was a far-fetched idea. We still haven't got it yet, but I think we have a good, good shot at it. So kudos to everybody involved. And I wanna say something else, and Max was just touching on it. Safety is a big issue. You can't talk about expanded walkability and bikeability unless you have your street safe. And we still have work to do there, and I think that the issue of traffic issues, traffic speeding and reckless driving, I think we need to focus more on that. We're, we're gonna discuss that in, in the subcommittee and how we can, how we can come up with some ideas and how we can integrate kind of more of a safety emphasis so that we can encourage walkability, because it doesn't do any good if you have sidewalks and bike lanes, but people are afraid to use them because of traffic problems. Plus, there's a lot of other things we're looking at. Just the idea of having to cert, now kind of focus on the east side of town because we have Metro Micro and we have the 268 on the west, gives us kind of an opportunity to kind of experiment a little bit with this, this dial ride system. And I'm kind of looking forward to seeing what we kind of come up with. It's gonna be kind of innovative. Anyway, I, I could talk all day, but I'm very, very, very happy to be on the subcommittee.
Thank you for doing that also. We should thank you for your service, as well as Mayor Protam. Mayor Protam, did you have anything to add?
No, as usual, Councilmember Goss does an incredible job of summarizing everything, everything he said. I couldn't have said as well, but completely echo it, so thank you.
Yes, thank you as well. Okay, so Matt, Senior Analyst Carlson, do you have what you need from this discussion? Thank you. Okay, and I appreciate, I think we have, yes, great, thank you for returning. We'll, we'll head on to our final item, I believe. Two, sorry, sorry. Do you wanna skip to--
Madam Mayor, I would recommend that we skip to discussion item three.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. So, yes, that's, that's why I said last, because it was the last on the list. So ordinance, proposed ordinance 1469 relating to landscape equipment.
Great, thank you again. So the evening's not final discussion item, as I wrote down here, is an introduction of ordinance 1469. Staff is recommending that the City Council read ordinance 1469 by title only, adding chapter 8.40 landscaping equipment to Title VIII, Health and Safety of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Ordinance 1469 would prohibit any person from using or operating or causing any gas-powered leaf blowing machine or equipment to be operated. The ordinance will require a second reading at the March 12th meeting. It will also not go into effect until September 1st of 2024 to provide an opportunity for education and outreach. The Sierra Madre Natural Resources Commission reviewed and discussed the draft ordinance at their October and November 2023 meetings, resulting in an unanimous vote to recommend that the ordinance be adopted by the City Council. This council has went, as, as well as previous councils, have received a number of presentations regarding the air quality concerns over gas-powered landscaping equipment. South Pasadena City Council Member Michael Caciotti has personally addressed this body on numerous occasions. The Natural Resources Commission also researched the detrimental health effects of air pollutants, nitrogen oxides, and volatile organic chemicals produced by this equipment, and some of these statistics are included in your staff report. In conclusion, again, staff is recommending that the City Council read ordinance 1469 by title only, adding chapter 8.40 landscaping equipment to Title VIII, Health and Safety of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Now, there are two minor items that will be corrected in the ordinance for its second reading in March. The staff would like to bring to your attention. At the beginning of the ordinance, section 8.40.010A and B, the term "gas-powered" will be removed. These sections address the times and days of the week that any light leaf blower use will be allowed or prohibited. And finally, the date of the approval at the end of the ordinance will be changed to reflect the March City Council meeting. Thank you, and I'd be happy to address your questions.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
The, the enforcement provisions of this are, are the same as they are within the regular municipal code. There's no changes to it. It's the standard. If we had violations for anything else, say noise or any other ordinance in the city, it would go through the same fine process. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the intention. At 8.24.020 penalties, violations of the sections are subject to the Administrative Fines and Penalties section. So it's consistent with all other violations, yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
If I, if I may, may address and ask a question of, maybe Management Analyst Carlson can answer, but I know we have a couple of people from AQMD here. It really has to do with whether or not there's funds left, left over, because a lot of cities did this prior to us doing it for our small businesses that provide landscaping to our residents in order to exchange or replace their gas-powered.
Well, I will definitely let them expand, but I can tell you that staff and our Natural Resources Commission, we follow Pasadena and South Pasadena pretty closely when we were looking at this, at this ordinance, and they have a really nice section of rebates and incentives that we will probably steal, but don't tell anybody.
Okay.
Just the council member from South Pasadena?
He might, he might know.
Mayor, councilmember, staff, there's still money available. The, the CARB money that was available, twenty-seven million dollars, was gone within a year, several months ago. But there's still money left from Environmental Protection Agency grant for our four county region. Two weeks ago, there's about 3.1 million. I believe there's a little under three million. Only Unified took a lot, and if they jump in, they could take a million within a few weeks. So I'd encourage you to implement it as soon as possible. With seventy-five to eighty-five percent off for the commercial gardeners, it's a huge incentive, not only in the equipment, but batteries also. So a piece of equipment might be a thousand dollars, so you're getting seven hundred and fifty dollars off each piece of equipment. Never buy gas again, spark plugs, filters, et cetera, or two-stroke oil. It's an easy process. They would just go to the dealer. Dealer does all the paperwork. They turn in the old pieces. With our program as, in opposition to CARB, CARB, you not have to turn in an old piece of equipment. With ours, you gotta scrap an old piece. Just gotta find an old piece, scrap it, wanna get rid of it, will destroy it, and then eighty-five, seventy-five, eighty-five percent off. Lawnmower, weed whacker, hedge trimmers, leaf blowers, et cetera.
And so you'll be able to talk with staff to make sure we have those resources, like on our website, and we--
Yes, I can work with you, and we'll get you all the information you need, up-to-date numbers.
That's great news. Thank you for being here.
Of course.
Thank you for all your help on this.
I have a follow-up question with that, with our communications and also with both, I'm sure it's gonna be a collaborative effort. With money obviously going quickly with, with us passing this and all the other cities around us also looking to pass this, many have already, what is the timeframe likelihood that we would be able to have that on our website?
We have a, a, a new passionate communications member to our team right now, so I'm, I'm happy to say that I think it'll go relatively quickly. We did identify less business license holders than I was expecting to find with the gardeners. And it was, it's not a precise number because it's, it's kind of hard to tell, but I think I had it in here, and I don't get the number off, thirty. I think there's about thirty. We will approach independently or individually, and then we will put the information out for the general public as well.
And I will say that, like, for instance, my gardeners, I think, also do business in Pasadena. They've already switched over, so I think of those thirty, I would suspect some number of them probably are subject to this regulation in, in surrounding cities and so have already made the switch.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor, may I follow up?
Sure.
So what we did is we implemented it. We, we strung ours out maybe a little over a year versus your six-month time period. We found out we had several demonstrations by the American Green Zone Alliance. I think you've worked with Dan made before. We actually, at our parks, we probably sent out two letters over that time period to every property owner or the person of some of the commercial businesses who's ever responsible for the lease, maintaining a property to them. And we found out several demonstrations were good, but still didn't reach all the gardeners. We, we also implemented a mobile outreach. So we have Dan out there with his van with all the equipment. He's going, you know, actually, he's going out tomorrow morning, about eight o'clock if you wanna watch. I'll go out with him. He just drives in neighborhoods when he sees the gardeners that aren't following it, just, hey, here's the equipment you gotta get it. Here's a city ordinance. I'm not gonna say anything, but they're gonna be coming by looking, and it's really helping out a lot. But we, I'll just tell you, in our year, so we passed it 2021, implemented enforcement 2023. In a year and a little more, we've had about four hundred and sixty-eight violations. It's, it's a lot. We've had a lot of people convert over, because I drive around, take a lot of photos. I send a photo with date and time in to our code enforcement person. He needs the information. People will call and we say, you can't do that through the administrative fine process. You need evidence. So you gotta have a picture, and you gotta testify if you want to, and a time on there. But a lot of people still unwilling to change. So we had several people that paid the one hundred, plus two hundred, three hundred dollar fine. So of those, about nine or ten are just repeat offenders, but there are a lot of people just, the gardener was lazy. The gardener, I've seen, you'll see, you'll see it too. They have an electric and a gas. They'll be looking around. They'll use the gas. If they see somebody coming, they'll pull out the electric. So the outreach is really important. We found that out, and we thought just having it at the park was enough. It wasn't. So we have the, the mobile outreach, letters, and a newspaper, so it's really, really important to happen. And again, even a year, people were still complaining they didn't see it. With two letters, big project, so.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay. So this is just the first reading, so this is, we, we don't have to approve the first reading. We just did the first reading, correct?
Correct. You don't approve anything at the first reading.
And do we ask for public comment now or at the second meeting?
You, you ask it for, at both meetings.
Okay, so we'll open for public comment.
Madam Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this topic.
I believe we've received one email for public comment.
We did receive one email. It was forwarded to the City Council and uploaded to the city's website.
Thank you. Okay. All right, now the real last. Do we have anything else? The real last item, thank you for your patience, Planner Wolf, the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight's final discussion. I have just a brief receive and file report regarding the General Plan Annual Progress Report and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, both for calendar years 2023. By April 1st of each year, the city is mandated to provide an annual report on the status of the general plan and its housing element implementation. With a compliant housing element and up-to-date submissions of annual progress reports, the city gains access to SB 2 grant funds. For the general plan progress, there was one amendment to the general plan's safety element, which is just a small update to the language in Chapter 3's Hazard Prevention, which only adds website link to cities, to the city's local hazard mitigation plan. And then upon its passage, Resolution 23-40 was forwarded to the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. In terms of grant funding, the city was awarded a CalAPP grant from the California Energy Commission in the amount of forty thousand dollars for the implementation of online solar permitting, or what has sometimes been referred to as instant solar permits. The city has implemented SolarApp with a pilot program offered to several frequently, frequent residential solar contractors. The pilot program allows technical issues to be resolved, so that by September 30th, 2024, the program, program can be fully launched. And in 2023, as far as the Housing Element Progress Report goes, 2023 is the second reporting year since the Housing Element was approved, and in that year, twenty-six building permits were issued for ADUs and two were issued for above moderate income homes. The total of twenty-eight units count toward the infill development, and for the city's RENA obligation, 2023 was shown to be a record-breaking year for ADUs, permitting more than the prior two years combined. Because HCD Housing, I'm sorry, HCD being the California Department of Housing and Community Development, they recognize Sierra moderate ADUs to be implicitly low-income units. The city has already fulfilled its obligation, also exceeded its obligation to construct low-income units, where it has forty-seven versus the needed thirty-nine. To satisfy the remaining RENA obligation, the city will need to permit seventy-nine very-low-income units, thirty-four moderate-income, and forty-two above-moderate-income housing units by the end of the sixth cycle Housing Element, which is October of 2029. If the city is able to satisfy its entire housing needs allocation for all-income categories, it is no longer subject to certain state housing laws, including SB 35 and portions of the Housing Accountability Act. And then looking forward in the year 2024, we're looking at pre-approved ADU plans, the Minor Home Repair Program, and a fully digital permitting platform. These efforts are currently being undertaken and expected to be completed in 2024 and subsequently reported on the APRs for next year. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Very well done. Any, any questions?
Just a quick one, and I'm kind of joking, but kind of serious. So how do we get our ADUs to, to comport with moderate-income housing? Or is that just not, because it sounds like we're meeting our, our, our low, very low, I, I might, but is there any way to?
So I, I don't think there is, because they're already considered as low-income, and we can indeed restrict them as moderate, but because they're already implicitly low-income, it wouldn't make much sense to do so.
Well, I'm glad we, we already knocked that out. So it'd be nice to meet our numbers, to get, to get all those bonuses, right?
I'm skeptical.
Very unlikely.
Yes?
If I can just follow up with that.
So can, Planner Wolf, can you help me, remind me on what classifies as moderate housing? What's the income level threshold?
I do not have those numbers offhand. We'll have to get back to you on that.
You know, it, it might be nice just at some point to give us like a, a one-page or something, or maybe part of, you know, it might be even better to just put it as part of the next staff report. That way, when we're looking at it, because I can never remember what the thresholds are, and that, and that helps me think about kind of, to, to Councilmember Garcia's point, i- is like, how do we, what are we trying to target when we do that? And so we're thinking about how to provide feedback or suggestions or questions. It might be helpful. It would, it would be helpful to have that.
I can give you a conceptual figure. For moderate income levels, their income threshold is at one hundred and ten percent of the area's median income. What that number actually is, I'm, I'm not sure, but we can get back to you on that.
That actually is very helpful. So it's a hundred and ten, and then, and then above moderate is, is at what percentage?
Above moderate is just the market rate, so it's whatever the market is demanding.
So pretty much everything else--
Great, thank you.
Real, thank you.
I, I guess I have also a kind of joking, kind of not joking question. Is there any concern that we into year two of our eight-year cycle have exceeded the number assigned to us? I worry that that then creates a sense that our number should have been higher. Are we at all, I mean, and I suppose there's no real way to mitigate that, but I guess that's my, when I hear that, I get concerned that we, you know, we said, we, we didn't ask for enough. It's gonna be the response from HCD. I don't know if you have thoughts about that?
So my anecdotal response would be that HCD certainly will see it, will have, we're required to report it to them, but the RENA allocation numbers are allocated to each city based on certain factors outside of their performance.
That's good. Yeah, no, I know the SCAG has a, has a, has a handed in as well.
Right, is it, it's, it's, the region receives it based on HCD's calculation, but the distribution is through SCAG.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will open it up for public comment.
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards or emails on this topic.
And I believe this is received and filed, correct?
Correct.
Great. Any discussion or further comments?
I just had, I, I, I had a quick one, and that is, you know, when we're looking at some of these things. So first, I wanna commend staff for the great work. When you go through and you look at this report, there's a lot of work that Planning Department has done on it. It, it's really, really impressive. I think that when we look at some of these other items, of kind of action items, the list that's in there, I, I just would encourage, as, as I think people have heard me say before, when we're looking at how we implement actions in the future to, to put on some targets and some timelines on it. So, and one of my passions, as people know, is sustainability, and if I look at items eighteen and nineteen out of it, thinking through like, what does that mean when we're looking at installing energy and water efficiency appliances, or improvements, excuse me, what do we mean by outreach and education? Just as, as you're thinking about updating this before or in the future, just, you know, think about how we can have some, some good measurable chunks to, to, to continue to show the progress that you've done so well at.
Good point, thank you. Thank you very much for, and I, and I was at the Planning Commission when you presented it in long form, and it was even more impressive there, so thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our lengthy agenda. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
I don't know if it's an agenda item or just a advisement, but we have had an increase in some homeless and unhoused issues in Sierra Madre on park benches and encampment, well, I'm not gonna count it, a tent in Bailey Canyon. So I would like city management and staff to kind of analyze being proactive and looking at what, what we have available in terms of resources and how, how we can react legally.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it would also be helpful, I think a lot of us know kind of what the parameters are legally because of, of involvement we've had in other meetings, but I think it might be helpful for the public, based on some public comments I've seen, to understand what limitations we have on enforcement, particularly around, you know-- particularly around, you know, public camping and things like that, based on cases at the Ninth Circuit that I know are under review at the Supreme Court in this term, but obviously have not been decided. So I think it would be helpful, I think, to get out there, to the public, a discussion of what we can and can't do. And to be clear, I mean, it's a hundred percent increase because we've gone from one to two, so I don't want it to create this like we have some homeless problem or, you know, some escalation, but so just...
Proactive.
Right, exactly. I appreciate that framing, because I think that's exactly right.
Also, can we also add some, we have great resources on our websites and our information on what to do with the bears, but since the increase with mountain lions, can we add that to our communication plans? On what citizens are supposed to do when they encounter a mountain lion. It did come across really well on some of the posts, but I think it should be in some permanent spots, too.
Okay, great. If nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Bye, Robert.
Bye, Robert.